A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Nanki, do you have a motion for us regarding approval of additions and deletions?
Oh, I do, and a very special one it is. I would move additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to accept additions and deletions to the agenda.
If I may comment on that just for briefly?
You would please.
There are some additional comments in regard to agenda items. We revised the agenda so it may go in a little different order than what people see on the base agenda. We pulled the police task force item up to before consent calendar. We rearranged the public hearings to where the public hearing on Rainier will be first. And then Counselor Anderson had wanted to pull the 60-30-10 split, and so it was just moved to special orders of business. So we don't have to do any of that long-haired stuff on the upfront.
Point of order?
Yes.
I just learned that the, from Councilor Nanki, that the police task force is now on the consent agenda?
No.
It is coming just before the consent.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry. I thought he said for the consent agenda. So I retract my point.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please signify yea by saying yay. Thank you.
Yay!
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll try to do better now. Thank you. Yes, it's Tuesday, not Monday, and we're all mixed up. All right. We do have time for council and city manager comment. Do councilors have comments this evening? Yes, Counselor Lewis and Counselor Benars?
Actually, I have two quick things. I'd like to invite everybody to an exciting dog, small dog park celebration at Orchard Heights Park this Saturday. The exciting thing about this was a letter I got from two friends, Olivia and Lily Bush. Their parents are Bill and Linda Bush. And a little over, actually a little less than a year ago, Olivia and Lily were in a leash-free area in Orchard Heights Park, and they were not accosted by the big bully dogs, but they were befriended, I guess, in their words. And the idea came up, it'd be nice to have a place for small dogs. And so their parents came up with the idea. They worked hard with the West Salem Neighborhood Association, the Salem Parks Bureau, and within less than a year, and this is the neat thing for me, within less than a year, they got everything done, organized, and the park is there. It's going to be celebrated this Saturday at 1:30 at Orchard Heights Park. So I'd like to invite everybody to attend.
Thank you. Counselor Benars?
I don't want to steal your thunder. I had three items, two of which involve you. So the first one I want to start out with is last Wednesday, our excellent mayor gave a state-of-the-city address to the Salem City Club, the Rotary Club of Salem, and the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce down at the convention center. I thought it was one of the best speeches I've heard in a very long time. Really enjoyed both that and I think it was the West Salem Jazz Band that played. They were just absolutely awesome, but just really wanted to compliment you on your speech that you gave. The second item that I wanted to cover, and I don't know if you want to cover it, and it has to do with the giving of the key to the city to our governor, Kate Brown, this last week. Our mayor, again, was up to task, handed our governor the key to the city. Our governor now resides in Mahonia Hall and is using the Salem City Parks to walk and jog and enjoying Salem. It's the first time, I think, in about 20 years that we've had a governor actually permanently reside in this community, and it's really nice to welcome her into our community. The third item that I wanted to cover also deals with our mayor, and it has to do with the ribbon cutting of the construction of the Minto Island Peter Courtney Bridge, which took place last week, and I was in attendance as well as several of the other city councilors. It was a beautiful day and a beautiful time to kick off what is going to be a jewel for our park system, connecting three parks with two bridges to make one United City. Thank you.
Wonderful. I thought you were going to say that the governor and her husband now have cards to the Salem Public Library. That's the big deal. A key is something, but a card to the library is everything. Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Nanki.
I just want to commend the staff, two members of the staff particularly, Chris Green, who's a planner, and Lisa Anderson-Olgovy. On my way back from the airport today, I spoke with them for about, I was not driving, I spoke with them for close to an hour to discuss the ramifications of item number eight, excuse me, 7B, that is the Lord and Schreiber House historic permit, and they were very helpful in explaining things. And I hope to be able to ask them a question or two when this comes up as an information report. So thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in, on the groundbreaking ceremony, there was a sacrificial drone.
Oh, yeah?
Right as they were getting ready to start, pictures shot down in and plunged itself to a death in the slough. So that was kind of like water breaking as well as groundbreaking. So it was a special time.
Does our city manager have comments today? No, all right. Thank you. All right. We'll proceed then. And we have a presentation this evening. We're very honored to have Marion County Commissioner Janet Carlson is with us, and she has a guest as well whom she will introduce. And you are here to talk about the Big Toy. So welcome. Welcome very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council, for having us here tonight. After June 4th, which would be next week, we will have been to every neighborhood association except one in the city of Salem. And I know four councilors that I see here have seen the longer version of this presentation. We have an abbreviated version tonight because of time. This is Marlene Quinn, who is on city council in Kaiser, and also chairs the Big Toy Task Force, I think is what we call it. So she's going to do the second half of the presentation in five minutes, and I'm going to do the first in five minutes. So let me first of all say that this is the Kaiser Rapids Park, and the important word to see on this slide is regional. It is, when we go to the neighborhood meetings and talk about the park, we ask how many people have been to Kaiser Rapids Park, and usually less than half of the people raise their hand. But it is a regional park. It's for all of us. We had city council from Salem involved in the task force. Marion County was involved in the task force, as well as city of Kaiser and state of Oregon and federal people. So it really belongs to everybody. It's up off of Shamau Road, right along the Willamette River. It is almost 150 acres, I think 148 acres, and it's just gorgeous. We'll have some slides in a few moments that, look, we provided you with the entire copy of the slideshow because we're doing this quickly, so you can linger over these slides later if you can't actually catch all of the detail on them. But there you can see a picture of the river, some of the natural area of the park. Eighty-five acres is on lease from the Oregon State Parks. This was actually also part of the Willamette River Initiative, trying to connect a water trail. So the whole focus behind the park was around that. Lots of challenges that we faced, but the park was a vision that happened in the early 2000s, and by 2006 it was open. So it's really a miraculous thing. We looked at what other communities are doing, and I won't spend a lot of time on these slides, but Albany and Independence and Salem have all been working on reconnecting to the Willamette River, and this is Kaiser's opportunity to do that. This is an aerial photo, and you can't see it as well because of the light, but you can see the Willamette River, the rapids there down in the bottom, Kaiser Ripple or Kaiser Rapids, as sometimes it's known. And then the treat area on the left is where the park is. So it's about people connecting to the river, to the region, to each other. It's got the beauty of nature in it. We, Marion County and city of Kaiser went together and got a $500,000 grant from Parks and Recreation Department to purchase some of the land. We're leasing from Parks and Recreation Department also, the 85-acre piece that is for a dollar, I think for 100 years in 20-year increments. Got a grant from ODOT to improve Shamau Road, got a grant from the Marine Board to build a boat ramp, got lots of technical assistance from National Park Service, Bureau of Land Management and others, lots of volunteer support, as with the Big Toy. Many partners are listed on the slides. The master plan was updated and approved in November 2014 to add this last orchard parcel where the Big Toy will be. And here you can see a picture of the boat ramp. A lot of people don't know there's a wonderful boat ramp at Kaiser Rapids Park and a great big parking lot. The amphitheater, which $30,000 was put in from Kaiser Rotary and $30,000 from the city of Kaiser, and this is worth a half a million dollars at least, Kaiser Rotary and a lot of people donated materials and actually donated the labor. At the dog park, you mentioned the dog park in West Salem, and I think they are emulating the Kaiser Rapids Park Dog Park, where they have an area for small dogs and for large dogs. And that was built with Kaiser Veterinary Clinic providing the money for the fencing and D&amp;J Dog grooming for that little doggy drinking fountain that you see there. And now the next iteration of the Kaiser Big Toy is, I mean Kaiser Rapids Park is the Big Toy, and Marlene will talk about that. And I'll move the slides along.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. The Big Toy at Kaiser Rapids Park was a vision of a citizen that had gone to one of these, one of these big toys in another city, McMinnville, I believe, and brought it to us. And we've been looking for things, and a playground was in the master plan, so we thought, well, let's figure it out. Why not? So we started this task force over 18 months ago. That's how long we've been working on this project. We went to every elementary school in the city of Kaiser with a vision, we give them a vision of what do you want to see in the park. And as you'll see in these following slides, these are some of the things that these kids drew on a sheet of paper. 3,500 students drew pictures on a piece of paper and turned it into our consultants, who are Leather and Associates from New York, and together they sat in a hotel room for six hours and came up with this vision for this park. It's 15,000 square feet. So imagine 15,000 square feet. That's going to be a playground. It's going to be ADA accessible. You can use your, you know, we have special needs committee. We have a childcare committee. This is, this build is going to happen June 10th, which is the last day of school for most schools here in Salem, and will end on Sunday, June 14th, whenever we get done. We're going to build from dawn till dusk and probably later. 700 volunteers are needed and three shifts during the day. We'll provide food. We provide childcare. If you're 16 and older, you put on a hat and a t-shirt and you can go to work. If you're 16 and under, we, don't worry, we have things for you, too. You go to, we have a website that was developed by, her name is Valerie, and Valerie worked for Steve Jobs, you know, with that big company, Microsoft, and she donated her time and labor and built us a wonderful website, kaiserbigtoy.org. Everything you want to know about the Big Toy, including contact information, volunteer information, where it's at, when it's going to begin, how to sign up if you want to participate in the build, can be found on that website. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Let me just add one thing really quick. Leather's and Associates, they are the consultant that's helping us build it. So we're providing volunteer labor, but they gave us the parks list, a manual that's like a couple hundred pages long. They've done 3,000 of these playgrounds around the United States and every state in the United States and also seven other countries. They were involved with the Gilbert House, if you remember way back when. So they know how to do these parks. They've been doing this since the 70s. So we're going to dig holes, and then we're going to fill holes, and then it's going to get built up and across. So it's really quite an enterprise to see how it's going to happen. And this slide that I've left up here, Salem Kaiser Volcanoes is sponsoring a special, unique component, which is going to be a volcano slide. It's actually going to be more fancy than this. It's going to blow up, right, like a volcano?
Correct. Yes, correct.
And have a little thing underneath it, and people can slide through, children can slide through volcanoes, through, what's his name, Crater's leg?
Crater, crater.
Yeah, right. So this is a picture here that we had from Leather's where they showed where other parks have been built using the same methods. You can see how they've got all the posts up, something for everyone to do, whether it's construction or art or
Well, it's built-in stages, right. And we're going to use the whole park. You think about how big that park is, a lot of that park's going to be filled up with, for five days, with the supplies and tents and everything that you need to put components together and then to carry the components to the actual, where they're going to be set in the ground. So.
So with that, we'll take questions.
Wonderful. This is really exciting. I congratulate both of you. I know you've worked very hard on this. It's a great addition for the communities. Questions from councilors? All right. Oh, Counselor Benars?
So I know that a project like this is going to have concrete, and it's going to have a lot of really specific skilled kind of work that's being done. Is there work that's going to be pre-done so that they're ready to go, that, i.e. the concrete's poured kind of thing?
Yes, that's correct. Actually, we've already, we've already cleared the area where it's going. And the day before the build, we'll actually set, you'll see if you go back a couple of slides, Janet, where we're going to be putting in some posts. You see those posts right there? So we'll set those in probably the day before, okay? And then it's like an engineered thing. Every station will have a certain thing that people will do, and then we build onto that.
So at that point, you don't need to have a skill. You don't need to be a mason?
No. If you can run, if you can run a saw, you're skilled.
Yeah.
And if you can't, then you can paint or do something. We've got something for everybody, so it doesn't matter. But we've got construction captains that are actually like Rich Duncan, those people out in the community who are going to be the captains of the crew, and will make sure that everybody uses their skills the way they can.
Correctly, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's exciting, and we'll watch the progress. All right. It's now time for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening? Thank you. This is public comment for agenda items. And so we are first of all going to call on, is it James Lesson, followed by Scott Snyder? If I've mispronounced your name, I apologize. If you can correct me, I'll
It's okay. It's German.
Get it down right. I'm sorry. It's what?
It's German. It's Aldersen A, L-D-R-S-L-N.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Welcome. And you have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on. At the end of three minutes, the red light comes on.
Okay. My concern is the parking. I work for a company here in town, and it is very difficult for parking because our trucks are oversized. And I'm not here representing with the company. I'm on my own behalf. And especially here, we had a change, we do, we service for the, see, Salem for our deliveries, and there've been times where we cannot park in the city of Salem shop because parking here by the bus stop, it says, restaurant only loading zone CCTV. And we cannot park there because there's a car, and it's usually the gentleman who owns a restaurant who parks there. And our truck takes two spots to park. And I asked him repeatedly, want time to move. And with customers in this restaurant, I got yelled at. And so it'd be nice to have a commercial loading zone for commercial vehicles around the city hall. There are none.
All right. Are there questions? Perhaps, actually, what I'm going to do is refer you to city staff. I'm sure that there's someone who has responsibility for the parking areas around. I see some heads nodding back there. Someone back there is going to
And by the way, the parking authority for the city of Salem has been really excellent with us.
Good. Well, I'm glad to hear that. Well, we'll try to get this squared around for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sharif. Thank you very much. Scott Snyder, followed by Casia Quillanen.
Good evening. My name is Scott Snyder. I'm chairperson for the Cultural Promotion Tourism Advisory Board and general manager for the Grand Hotel here at 201 Liberty Street Southeast. I'm here speaking tonight in support of our Cultural Promotion Tourism Advisory Board's annual report. The collaborative effort that helped advance much of our progress this last year is something that our board is very proud of. The advisory board reviewed 49 grant applications. Thirty of the, 36 of those received passing scores, including nine facilities, three capital improvement requests, and 24 special events and projects. We have a very diverse group of participants that make up our board, and we attempt to balance the policy C1 and section 56 of the Salem Charter, along with our board objectives to help increase guest room nights and the quality of life for Salem residents. We recently had a situation with an application that met the technical review that our city staff liaison conducts, seeking funding to cover, to take over one of Salem Downtown's first Wednesday events. Now, technical review ensures that proper paperwork is submitted to be considered by the board. It does not mean that they will necessarily receive funding, as was the case with the 13 total applicants that did not meet our requirements this year in the application cycle. This popular event has been organized for the past six or seven years by the EID recipient funded through a self-imposed tax on downtown businesses. It exceeds about $100,000 per year when the tax was being collected. In 2014, when support was lost by a majority of the downtown businesses, the tax collection and the promotional effort went away for downtown activities, including First Wednesday. Due to a lack of a quorum at our February meeting, in which the board discusses questions and concerns of individual applications, I had concerns about the viability of a non-EID recipient having the capacity to operate a year-round event. Now, had our February event, February meeting taken place, I do believe that the board would have found that the application should have been denied without ever being scored. Unfortunately, since this meeting and conversation never took place prior to final scores needing to be submitted, my only recourse was to grade the application as a zero. This took them under the 75% threshold and thus eliminating them from consideration. I did have to explain my concerns over, after the fact, due to the surprise of everyone that, on the board and the people, other people in the room. The applicant spoke to the advisory board regarding their distrust of the situation, and they felt that it was a political move. I need to assure you, as the council that signs our board, nothing could be further from the truth. My company has personally contributed financially to events coordinated by this applicant. The advisory board's objective is to make your lives easier through equitable review and recommendations. For that reason, I do apologize for you having this situation arise. The advisory board had a work session in April in order to discuss how we can improve the transparency of the evaluation process of grant requests. We will be approving several recommendations at our June meeting to minimize surprises for future applicants. And while I feel bad for the situation, I do believe that positive steps have been identified.
I'm sorry I have to draw your attention to the fact that your time is up.
Oh, sorry. I welcome questions regarding the annual report or the request that was forwarded by the applicant for council consideration for funding of the First Wednesday event. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your statement and the time that you've spent to try to explain to everybody, really, the process and the procedures that were followed. Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot.
Casia Quillanen, followed by Paula Fasano-Negali, maybe? Ms. Quillanen, welcome.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm here to address the staff report with regard to agenda item 5A, which is our police facility task report. And on the whole, I'm happy to report that we actually did reach an agreement. Hurrah, you know.
[laughing]
I do have some short concerns with regard to the, to the staff report recommendation, however, and I'd like to address them now. For one thing, the staff report recommendation, which is the operative part of the staff report, doesn't matter what the rest of the facts and findings actually say, simply directs the staff to issue an informal RFP for a facility architect. First of all, I don't know, I don't even understand what informal RFP is, but we'll let that go by, to determine the feasibility of a site and then to develop a conceptual design for the selected site. All that's fine, and all that is consistent with what the task force recommended. However, what is missing from there is the idea that we would like to direct city staff to immediately begin looking for sources of funding and financing options in order to be able to tie up a piece of land when it becomes available, and to do that before the issuance of a bond. And that's not in our recommendations here, and it really does need to be there, so that staff can start looking now. Because presumably it will be a year or more before we get to the point of needing to have that money, but if we wait until a year from now or two years from now, it will be way too late. And people in the real estate market have told us that over and over and over again. So I would recommend that we add in that piece, directing staff to look at financing options as soon as possible, like immediately would be good, since you're in the budget cycle. So that's all I have to say. Other than that, I think we did a good job. I think we came up with some good recommendations, and on the whole, I think it will be supported by the public.
Thank you very much. And I want to say a special thank you, Casia, for the work, the extra work that you did on the task force. I know you were very helpful in the actual sort of numerization and writing at the end, and appreciate that so very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, you're going to let me go.
Thank you for coming.
Well, for now, huh? Thank you. Yes, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Peterson, city council members. My name is Paula Fasano-Negley. You did great on the Fasano part. Usually, that's the part that trips people up. I'm here this evening to represent the American Red Cross in support of the Red Cross exemption to the transient occupancy tax ordinance 8.1A. The Red Cross is an independent entity that's organized and exists as a nonprofit, tax-exempt charitable institution pursuant to a charter granted to us by the United States Congress. We have the legal status as a federal instrumentality, basically giving us this charter to carry out responsibilities delegated by the federal government. And these responsibilities include protecting victims of conflict, providing family communications and other forms of support to the United States military, and to maintain a system of domestic and international disaster relief, including mandated responsibilities under FEMA. The American Red Cross does get some funding from cost recovery charges for some of our services, such as blood and blood products and health and safety training, but the vast majority of our funding does come from voluntary public contributions. For every one paid Red Cross staff member, there are 42 community volunteers. In the Salem area, these staff and volunteers have conducted home fire preparedness canvassing, installing free smoke alarms in homes in zip codes 97301 and 97305. We respond to many local fires, assisting families in need. We're present in the community with blood drives and health and safety classes, and we work closely with Oregon Emergency Management on earthquake preparedness and other emergency and disaster preparedness initiatives. We also partner with the city of Salem for disaster planning and provide canteen services to support first responders when there's a request for that. We respectfully request that the city of Salem support the Red Cross tax-exempt status, including city lodging tax. This would allow funds to be funneled back into the services of the American Red Cross to assist community members on a day-to-day basis. That means people that are affected by local disasters, training for staff and volunteers, and being able to maintain the materials and services that enable the Red Cross to help people in the city of Salem and throughout the Cascades region. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming to testify. Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next are Brian Hines, followed by Jim Shepke.
Greetings, Mayor and councilors. Suzanne Colwell, Sarah of Salem Community Division, planned to speak today about the same subject, the police facility, but she wasn't able to make it, so I'll extend her regrets for her. The recommendation of the task force to delay seismic retrofitting of the civic center building, city hall, library, parking structure, is a really bad idea. I urge you to return to the original plan to both build a new police facility and seismically retrofit city hall and the library. There's no reason to delay making essential preparations for the Big One earthquake. There's a matter of when, not if. Wikipedia says the intervals before six Big One earthquakes have been studied, the most recent one being in 1700. Here's the intervals for three of the six: 201 years, 250 years, 330 years. We're now at 315 years since the last Big One. The OPB site, Aftershock, a great site, says a magnitude 9.0 earthquake off the Pacific Northwest Coast could hit at any time. Enter your location above for a custom report on your seismic risks and how to prepare. I found that the intensity rating for city hall is five -- I found that the intensity rating for City Hall is five out of six when I put in the address. Several Salem friends and I put in our home addresses and got four out of six. The higher earthquake risk for the Civic Center, which is right where we are right now, probably is due to a three-out-of-four rating for ground deformation, something that didn't appear in our home risk reports. The Aftershock site says about the City Hall area, "The quake causes soils here to turn liquid, like wet sand. Underground pipes are damaged and evacuation routes could be compromised. Nearby houses are damaged, and the ground is permanently deformed. Rebuilding here, right here, will be difficult." A news release from the City of Salem says, "While the entire Civic Center campus needs seismic improvements, the task force recommended that the police station should be the priority." So apparently, saving the lives of police department staff is viewed as more important than saving the lives of other Civic Center employees, along with the lives of visitors to City Hall and the library, which could include children enjoying storytime at the library. If it is unthinkable that the police department be reduced to rubble when the Civic Center pancakes after a Cascadia subduction zone earthquake, why isn't it equally unthinkable to allow other City of Salem departments, along with the library, to suffer the same fate? All city agencies, not just the police department, need to function after a massive earthquake. Panicked citizens should be able to count on the Civic Center as a haven where disaster relief and emergency help are coordinated. It makes no sense to allow the Civic Center to become rubble rather than a refuge, a stable place in a ravaged community. The OPB report reflects that restoring water and sewer services and partial restoration of top priority highways will take more than a year after the Big One earthquake hits. Civic Center staff and facilities need to be part of the recovery efforts, not buried under a collapsed City Hall and library. Please, make seismic retrofitting of the Civic Center a priority, not an afterthought." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Hines? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Hines. Are you speaking for Salem Community?
Salem Community.
Or are you speaking for yourself?
Well, what I've said, I'm speaking for myself. What I've said reflects the position of Salem Community Vision.
Will someone else be here speaking? Because you said Susan Coltwalster couldn't be here. Will there be someone be speaking for Salem Community Vision?
Well, I tried to talk Jim Shepke, who's gonna follow me into doing it. Let's see if you can talk him into it.
Okay.
I think you know the position of Salem.
Yeah, I do, and I, I, the, the question I want to raise now, and I'll also raise it later, is one of the concerns about the bond measures is the necessity to separate it into one for the police station, one for the retrofitting, with the thinking being that it would be either too confusing or too, uh, too high of a number to do both in one. What, I, 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 I'm not interested now so much in your response as to if you know what Salem Community Vision's response to that concern is.
Well, I certainly do. I'm on the steering committee. I mean, the response is that you, you're going to have a better response by the public. It, this originally was called a public safety bond. Obviously, ensuring the public safety of employees and visitors to the Civic Center is as important as ensuring the public safety of police department staff who are at risk of being crushed to death in the earthquake. And we also believe that, because there are many thousands, tens of thousands of supporters at the library, that making clear that this is a bond, a fifteen-million-dollar or twenty-million-dollar effort to improve the Civic Center and make it safe would attract, you know, everybody whose child goes to the library, anybody who visits the library, and will make it easier to pass the bond rather than more difficult. So this idea that's complicated, we say we need to move the police out of Civic, City Hall because, because it's at risk of collapsing in an earthquake, but it makes no moral or ethical sense to leave everyone else unprotected. So it makes actually more sense to say we're doing both at the same time, and we need money for both at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Well, then, I guess that begs the question if, as we go through the process and assuming that we hire the consultant and the expert, and we find that the price is what it is, to accomplish both the police facility and the upgrades, if that goes above the fifty-million-dollar mark, so would you say that we should be including both even though the price tag goes up?
Well, the position of Salem Community Vision is, say, a fifty-million-dollar ceiling, thirty million for the police facility, twenty million for the, for the seismic retrofitting and the other renovations. Now, I, I recently had a interchange with Larry George on the face, on the Statesman Journal story on the subject. Larry George and I rarely agree about anything, but here we see a conservative him and a liberal me agreeing that just as the public doesn't say, "Let's just get an architect to design my house, and whatever it costs, let's pay for that with the nicest house that I can afford." You go, "No, I can afford a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house, and build me a house that fits." So we are convinced that an architect can build a thirty-million-dollar police facility if you tell them that that is the price. If you tell them the price is no object, architects can build you a police facility where the price is no object.
Okay. Are there further questions?
Well, I, yeah, I gotta have, I won't have been here fifteen years, but when I came to this community, we were building, uh, building for Marion County called the Courthouse Square, and it was built kind of based on that theory that we can build it for the certain amount if you want us to, and that didn't work out so well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Shepke, followed by TJ Sullivan.
Good evening, counsel. Jim Shepke, Ward Two. I want to speak to the same subject that Brian Hines just spoke to, but before I do, I have two thank yous to give out tonight. One is to the Salem Police Department, who today just did a terrific job of crowd control. We had a huge rally against LG, Liquid Natural Gas Pipelines at the Capitol, and they did a tremendous job of crowd control, so I want to thank them. I also want to thank the City Council as members of the Budget Committee for voting to restore Sunday hours at the Salem Public Library. That's gonna be a tremendous investment this summer. Summer reading is so important for kids, and I thank you for that. About 5A, I, I just want to add something. I want to tell you a story. In two thousand and six, in the city of Lebanon, they needed a new police facility and a new library. They put the two needs together. They had a bond measure that combined the two amounts of money into one. They got all the public safety supporters to work very hard on that election. They got all the library supporters to work very hard on that election. It was a winning combination. They won easily by fifty-nine percent. And Lebanon is a pretty conservative place. They don't raise their property taxes very easily down there. So, so I want you to know that I think it's a winning combination to combine the library, the City Hall, and the police facility into one measure. We have eighty-five thousand library cardholders at the Salem Public Library, eighty-five thousand. Now, not all of those are city residents, but the vast majority of those are city residents. They will work for this, and I think it's the key to success, is to include the library in particular in your measure, and that's what I wanted to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Shepke? All right. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate that. And TJ Sullivan.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. It was my pleasure to serve as the chair for this Blue Urban Task Force. You have a recommendation in front of you, and I would just echo the sentiments of Cassia in that not just adopting the, the notion that to direct staff to go out and seek immediate financing, but to direct staff to go out for items one through ten in our recommendation. We have a lot of members of the task force here tonight. I see Paul Rice over there, Jeff James, Cassia Quillanen, Claudia Burton, Sharon Blazi, our, our mayor, Counselor Benars, Counselor McCoyd, and if I'm missing anybody, I'm, I'm sorry that, that I missed you. And I, I made the, the joke at some point during a meeting, this would be the last group of people I'd invite over for a dinner party. But, but it was a, but it was a good representation from our community with young and old, new residents, longtime residents from all over the, the city, and, and this is a complicated topic that you have in front of you. We talked a lot about the size and the price and where it should be and what it should look like, and our recommendation comes after, you know, squaring a lot of those issues and determining that two bonds is better than, than one bond. You know, every community is different, and in this community, we tried to pass Kids and Cops Bond Measure, and it went down, and, and resoundingly, the results from that election, people said that the issue was that you had two separate issues that you were trying to shove into one bond measure, and they weren't going to support it because of that, that fact. And so, and we, we studied this hard, and it isn't that the one entity is more important than the other. At the end of the day, we determined that our job was to help give you guys the roadmap to successful passage for a new police facility, which we unanimously agreed with, at our very first meeting, after looking at Kaiser's facility and then walking through our facility, it was unanimous among our task force that we needed to have a new police facility inside the, the City of Salem. If you decide to go forward and decide to go forward with two bond measures or put them all together, that is obviously well within your jurisdiction. What we were looking at is if, to get a successful police facility bond passed, what would it take, and that's our recommendation, and we would encourage you to direct staff to follow items one through ten.
Yes, I, I'm gonna take just a second to say that TJ, actually, we had planned in our agenda, but we apparently failed to communicate to you that you would have more than three minutes, and so we were not communicating clearly with you. So if you had other items that you want to cover, we definitely want to do that as we actually begin the, the discussion about the police facility.
Sure. I guess the only other thing I would add is that, you know, there's, starting with what the needs of the police are in mind, and then working backwards, we started, I started with the analogy of Cooper Boulevard in this community, which is a road that was built at the time, which was an improvement over Boone Road, right? If you remember what Boone Road was like in that capacity. Cooper was an improvement, but it was built at the time to capacity. So as soon as it opened, it was basically undersized for what the need was. And so, that's somewhat of the dialogue that's taking place right now, is do you build a facility for what we need going forward, or do you build a facility for what we need right now? And as somebody who's got a ten and an eight-year-old who are gonna inherit this facility, I would like to think, and I think the members of our committee would like to think, that we're gonna build a facility that's designed for the community going forward, so that in ten years, we don't need to look at another bond measure for an add-on, which we heard from the consultants is probably the most inefficient approach that you could, you could take in, in this process. So when, our recommendation is to really build a facility now and for the future and moving forward, so we don't have another need ten years from now.
Okay. Thank you. I think Counselor Anderson, you had your hand up.
Thank you, TJ. I attended a number of those meetings, and I would agree with your dinner party analogy, and there was a lot of different conflicting issues that were there, and I thought you did, and the committee did a very good job of bringing them all together.
Thank you.
You reached some conclusions, and now it's up to the council, do we want to go along with those conclusions or follow them, the recommendations, excuse me. I'm curious as to your response to Cassia Quillanen's, um, talk about what was missing, was looking for some funding and financing options to secure a proposed site. And I look at number one and two of your recommendation, and while that might be implied in there, I don't think it's specifically said. So could you speak a little bit to what Ms. Quillanen spoke about?
Sure. If you drop down to number ten, it's, it's there. These weren't in any kind of order of importance, but it, it is definitely there, and, and it's just the issue that, you know, everybody wanted to pick a site immediately, and the hard part is, is that, you know, we're, we're playing with the house money at that point. And, you know, in, in order to really arrive at what the true cost is going to be, you gotta know where it's going to be built. You know, a property with a slope versus flat property, four acres versus six acres, highly desirable commercial versus, you know, property that the city owns, all of those things impact what that final, you know, bond measure is going to be. So arriving at a way to secure some of that, that financing and figuring out how much you can go forward, whether it's through an option, whether it's through actually buying the property, is gonna be critical to the success of this, you know, locating where this facility is going to be.
Thank you. If I may follow up on a question?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So in other words, it sounds like, in, in your view, one, two, and ten kind of go together in terms of your recommendations.
One through ten go together.
Well, I understand one through and ten, but, but it, it doesn't appear to be necessary. One and two look like immediately, do it now, so that's kind of a priority, and ten, I would think, go with that as well, and it says immediately direct. So those are things that you're saying we need to do right away, because we've got to find a site, we've got to have some sort of financing, whatever we do, an option or whatever we can do, because you can't design something until you know where, where it's gonna be built.
You're exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions from counselors? Counselor Benars?
I have, because I was on the committee, a lot of my questions have been answered. Yeah, there'll still be a lot of discussion yet to come. I have just a few words just to say, thank you very much for taking a very difficult issue, TJ, for, for handling it as chair of that committee and doing a superb job of coming up to a list of recommendations, listening to all sides of the problem, of the issue, and then having those discussions after, I don't know if it was a dozen or so meetings that we had, very long meetings at that, but I really commend you for what you did in your work as chair of that, that committee.
No, thanks. And I, you know, I, I give a lot of credit to the, the people on this committee. There's a lot of diverse views, and I really appreciated Cassia coming in and helping kind of coalesce all of our thoughts into some very concrete recommendations that really provide a good roadmap for all of you.
All right. Further questions or comments? Counselor McCoyd?
I was also on the committee. I'd like to thank TJ for the great job he did. It was a diverse group of people with a lot of different opinions and a, a strong group of people with strong opinions. I think the discourse was handled, handled very well, but TJ was the one that was riding herd and trying to keep us on task, and that was a challenging thing to do, and I think, I think the report's very well done. It was unanimously approved, and I think sort of everybody on that committee had some hand in, in part of development of that, of the, of the report, so. But thank you, TJ. You did a great job for the, not only the, the task force, but for the city.
Oh, thanks. I, I'd just like to say, I, I hope that thirty to forty years from now, that people look back on the facility that we build now, and they say that the discord that took place and the discussion that took place and the exchange of intellectual capital that took place resulted in the best decision that ultimately benefited the City of Salem and, and future generations benefit because of just the, the arm wrestling that took place in our, our task force. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say, TJ, before you leave the podium, how much I sincerely appreciate the work that you did. You stepped forward, you answered the call, and you worked diligently and brilliantly because you did bring together quite a diverse group of people, and I just compliment you for the skills that you used and also the, the, the heart that you put into the process. Thank you so very much.
Thanks. Well, look forward to passing the baton off to you all and watching you guys rode there for a while.
Did, did he just exit from the project? Thank you so much. All right. We are at a point where we had planned for some discussion. I wanted to know, just to be sure that we don't leave the issue quickly, if there are discussions that counselors would like to have at this point regarding the police task force, uh, report? Well, if not...
We're in 3A, then?
We are. We, we jumped down. Yes, we did. We did.
This is the time to...
Okay. So we do want, we do need a motion to receive the report from the task force. Counselor Nanki, would you like to crack that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would move that, uh, council received the Blue Urban Task Force on the police facility recommendations, direct staff to issue an informal RFP for an experienced essential facility architect to assist in defining the police department's space needs, determine feasibility of a 2B determined site, and develop a conceptual design for the selected site.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benars. Is there discussion? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I'd like to see this done with the highest priority.
All right. And what might that mean? Counselor Nanki?
Just in regards to some of the earlier conversations, and, and we're still trying to iron out our bonding authority and what have you as well, and splitting things up into some smaller things so that, because anything right now is gonna boost people's taxes up significantly. That being said, yeah, we're well overdue for the average on a, the Cascadia subduction earthquake, and it, it worries me greatly on a daily basis, but picking the Civic Center or the library to add seismic to and not doing anything with city shops, which are definitely gonna go crumbling to the ground, we have to prioritize all those, and, and we may miss on our timing. I'm hoping we don't, but that's still a discussion. I'm hoping we don't, but that's still a discussion that has to come before Council 2 on how we do a lot of things that this community needs over, you know, the next tens of years as well.
All right, Counselor McCoy, followed by Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As one of the task force members and one of the people that voted unanimously for the 10 points on the plan, I would like to add a move on amendment to the recommendation, and that would be, I guess, the number D, to put as number D, item 10 on the list, which would be direct staff at looking at financing options to tie up a piece of land as soon as practable and prior to the issuance of the bond.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Dickey to re-prioritize, is that what you said?
Well, add, add item number 10 on the list to the recommendation.
All right, thank you. Would you like to speak, oh, excuse me, all those in favor of the motion signified by, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to speak to your motion?
Sure.
All right.
Again, you know, we went through a lot of work, there was 10 meetings, a lot of work, a lot of, a lot of discussion, debate, and I think sometimes compromise went into this. These are the 10 items that the committee came up with, they voted on them unanimously, and so I feel that I need to at least make this motion and make this proposal on behalf of the committee members and all the work they did, because I think it's important.
All right, thank you. Counselor Benars?
Also have been at those meetings, we did talk about whether or not we should prioritize these 10 items, and it was decided in the end that they were all very important, some more important than others, and we decided, no, we were not going to have a prioritization level. So I'll just let you know that there was, well, you were there, considerable conversation in reference to this issue already.
All right, further discussion on the motion? All right, it's a substitute motion.
No.
No, an amendment to the motion. Counselor McCoy, would you like, excuse me, Counselor Anderson?
Well, then I guess I should ask the city attorney, by voting on the amendment, we're not voting on the original motion, we're just passing the amendment to the motion, we'll vote on the motion later.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McCoy, would you like to repeat your motion, please?
Probably going to come out different. I would like to amend the emotion, the motion to include item 10 on the list of proposals from the task force as, as, I guess, item D, in using the language there, immediately direct staff, city staff to look at financing options to tie up a piece of land, i.e. site as soon as practable and prior to the issuance of a bond.
All right, Counselor Benars?
I will not be supporting this motion, or the amendment to this motion, as, as there are a lot of little water to go underneath the bridge before we actually get to the point. I think we've identified funding sources, I think we have identified a lot of different things within the recommendations that have come along, but I think the A number one is to get the, the architect or design firm hired and online so that we know where we're headed long before we choose a, that was the whole purpose, was to let that expert kind of figure out where was the location supposed to be, including in that of which is, maybe it's on property that we already own, which would not be an acquisition. That left the door open.
All right, Counselor McCoy?
But number 10 doesn't, it doesn't say buy a piece of land, it says, look at financing options to have that financing available if, when they, when the site is selected, so you can move more quickly to tie up the land and begin the process, rather than wading through the whole process, then going out to seek, when you find a piece of property, now you've got to go find the financing and go through that whole dance. So it's not saying buy it now, it's saying, hey, start planning how you're going to find the money to do so prior to the search, so you're ready to do so when the search is complete.
Okay, all right, we do have a motion on the floor, on the floor, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the amended motion, please signify by saying, the motion to amend, please signifies by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with one nay from Counselor Benars. Thank you, then we go back to the original motion. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, I have another question, I guess, for city staff. By accepting your report, does that mean that we are then saying that we also agree with all its recommendations? Specifically, I'm looking at the one bond versus, not one bond versus two, but a combined bond versus only a bond for the police station. I think we're still, I think what, what this means is, we have received their report, we thank them, and that at some point in the future, we're going to be looking at adopting your recommendations.
I would say you are correct, there is a difference between adopting the recommendations and accepting or receiving recommendations.
Because I am very interested in exploring the idea of one bond for both things, and if now's not the time to have that discussion, I think it probably isn't, I just wanted to make sure that at some point, I'm going to be raising that issue and, and potentially asking for some staff time, because, you know, we're hearing, is this going to cost 50 million alone for the police station, or is it going to be 30 million, 20 million? I think we're pretty clear as to what earthquake-proofing the civic center would cost. The real question is, what is it going to cost for the police station? And I think the three items, the amendment that we just made, and looking at a site, looking at financing, coming up with some more concrete plans, that to me will have an effect as to whether we could look at one combined bond or we need to look at only a bond for the police station.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah, and we'll need to actually do some polling to find out what the, the will of the populace is out there. If we don't, we would be making a big mistake. We can't afford not to pass a bond, looking out at our future and where we need to be, that'll set back so many things, we need to do it right.
Right.
I agree with that.
All right, okay, the motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by yay, please signify by saying yes. Wait a moment, no?
Aye.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you very much. And again, sincere thank you to all those who served on the task force, it truly was an important, important step for the city of Salem, and I know that this work is going to lay the groundwork for tremendous decisions that are coming up for the city council. All right. We're going to move ahead to the consent calendar. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I would move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the consent calendar. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there's now two items on the consent calendar. One moved to special orders of business already, 4.3A is position on legislative priority bills, and then 4.3B is renewal of an inmate work program intergovernmental agreement.
All right, thank you. Call for the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you very much. All right, we're now, it's now time for public hearings. Would the recorder please introduce the first item, 5A?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding a petition to vacate an unimproved 90 foot long by 30 foot wide portion of Rainier Drive Southeast, public right-of-way generally located one quarter mile east of Liberty Road South. The hearing will be conducted with the staff presentation first, followed by the applicant, neighborhood association, or other interested persons, and applicant's rebuttal. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the applicant and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Boards of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Judy Jondav, I'm a transportation planner with the Public Works Department. See the slides, there we go. This is a public hearing to consider a petition submitted by Rainier Estates to vacate a 2,886 square foot portion of right-of-way of Rainier Drive Southeast, located approximately a quarter mile east of Liberty Road South. This map shows the location of the right-of-way to be vacated. This is Liberty Road South, Mildred Lane, this is Rainier Drive, and this is the yellow slotted, the yellow area is the area to be vacated. The unopened right-of-way was dedicated back in the late 1950s, prior to the development of the surrounding area. It was originally anticipated that Rainier Drive would continue and extend east, however, a different local street pattern was constructed, and there are single-family homes located directly east of the right-of-way, which precludes the extension of Rainier Drive. Rainier Estates has asked the city to vacate the right-of-way in order to allow for the construction of Lot 30 of tentative subdivision Platt 14-02, which was approved in 2014, and this plan shows the location of the right-of-way in relationship to the street layout of the, of the approved subdivision. As I mentioned, this is a petition initiated vacation request, and abutting property owners do have, may file a petition. All of the required consents of the abutting and affected property owners have been obtained, and no other public communication has been received. And April 13th, the city council authorized the city manager to set the date for the public Salem Revised Code requires that eight criteria, and they're listed as A through H on the slide, be met before vacating public right-of-way. This proposed vacation complies with all eight criteria. The vacation will not affect the provision of public utilities and will not degrade the transportation services or accessibility. It is consistent with Salem Transportation System Plan and the Revised Code, and furthers the public interest by releasing unneeded public property. The storm main is required to be installed to serve the new subdivision. The new main is located within the area proposed to be vacated and will connect to an existing main that's located between the two subdivisions, right about this point. Therefore, a condition, a condition of this vacation is the provision of an easement for the maintenance of the stormwater main. In accordance with Salem Revised Code, city council may at its discretion require petitioner to pay an assessment of special benefit, based upon the square footage of value of the land with the easement, the value is estimated to be $19,598. It is therefore recommended that the city council approve the vacation of Rainier Drive Southeast, subject to the following conditions, that the petitioner, Rainier Estates, pay an assessment of special benefit in the amount of $19,598, and that the petitioner provide an easement for the construction, maintenance, and repair, and replacement of municipal and utility facilities. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone signed up? Is the petitioner here?
Representative.
Good evening, I'm Teri Nordone, I'm a representative of Rainier Estates LLC. I have no additional comments, but I'm here to answer any questions if possible.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? All right, thank you very much. Was there anyone else here this evening who wanted to testify during this portion of public hearing, public testimony? Yes, Mr. Connect, did you want to testify on this particular item?
No.
Oh, not on this one, all right, okay, thank you. All right, no one else is here to testify, we will close the public, whoop, no? Oh, questions of staff first, thank you. All right. Are there any questions from the councilors? Counselor Benars?
I had an opportunity to speak with staff, Robert Chandler, prior to the, the meeting. I had looked at the appraisal report and just tried to figure out how they had come to the math, and I gather there's an easement, we're, we're receiving so much special benefit money for the easement portion, the portion where he's required to have, Rainier Estates is required to have a storm drain through, the remainder of the land is usable, and therefore it does not get any discount, because it will not have the easement on it.
That's correct, yes.
So, and there's no pipe there now, that was the other thing I couldn't get from staff report, but there will be requirement that one be put in.
That's correct, to serve the new subdivision, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any further questions of staff? All right, then we will close the public hearing. Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion for us?
I move the staff, staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you very much. All right, our second item under public hearing, petition for the vacation of a portion of First Street Northwest and Lincoln Avenue Northwest. Would the recorder please introduce that?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding a petition to vacate a portion of First Street Northwest and Lincoln Avenue Northwest. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by the applicant, neighborhood association, other interested persons, and applicant's rebuttal. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the applicant and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Following the close of the public hearing, a decision will be issued and mailed to the applicant, property owner, affected neighborhood associations, anyone who participated in the hearing, either in person or in writing, and anyone who requested to receive notice of the decision.
Thank you very much, and I see Julie Warnicki, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselor, my name is Julie Warnicki, Transportation Planning Manager with the Public Works Department. So as you know, we're here tonight to discuss this petition of a portion of First Street Northwest in West Salem, as well as a small portion of Lincoln Avenue, which is also known as Van Street, if you go out and look at the street sign, that's what it says. These street right-of-ways were originally created in 1909, so they've been around a while. The petition to vacate was submitted by Cascade Commercial Development LLC, one of three abutting property owners to the area proposed for a vacation. So you will hear, I'm sure, and have heard previously, the relationship of this vacation to a proposed goodwill development. However, Goodwill Industries at this point does not yet own the adjacent properties, and they have a number of other steps that they will have to go through if they proceed with acquisition and development, including site plan review amongst others. So for this reason, the, the findings on this vacation are independent of goodwill or any other particular development proposal. The, I guess I'd like to enter the staff report and, and the supplemental staff report into the record at this time. In the staff report, the recommendation includes a number of, approval of the petition with a number of conditions. The first three conditions here, and I'll go into those, use in a bit more in another slide, these three conditions really are tied to the approval criteria for the vacation. These next two conditions are an either/or, and these are tied to the assessment of special benefit. So the first three conditions, the first condition is to provide easements for utilities that are located within these rights-of-way. Currently, there are utilities in all of these rights-of-way. Some of these utilities, such as a sanitary sewer main that is in Lincoln and the east part of First, that is something that will need to stay there, need to be a permanent easement. Some of the other utilities are utilities that would likely be relocated through the redevelopment process, and could then be released by the city once that, that has occurred. The second condition has to do The second condition has to do with providing an easement for public fire access, sorry, try not to poke anybody in the eye here, but this one building that's down here by, um, Melinda, and Melinda is not an opened right-of-way, but this one building there with the vacation of the right-of-way will need to have a temporary easement for fire access, specifically fire turnaround, because fire trucks will still be able to enter First Street from Merlark. It's just that they need to be able to turn around until such time as, um, the street system is fully improved. The third condition is to construct a three-quarter street improvement, um, along Second Street right-of-way. Second Street is the former railroad alignment. It is not improved as a, um, city street. And that would include frontage improvements, sidewalks along the south side, and two travel lanes on the roadway itself. The reason for this condition is because there are a number of lots, six to be exact, that are located in here, and with the vacation of First Street, they would not have vehicular access to those lots, um, anymore, unless there's, you know, lot consolidation could also address some of that. Um, okay. The other two conditions relate to the assessment of special benefit. The Real Property Services Division, section of the Urban Development Department valued the, this right-of-way proposed for vacation at approximately a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That is with, the value with an easement over it. Alternatively, Goodwill Industries has voluntarily offered to, uh, construct some additional improvements and do some additional right-of-way dedication in lieu of the assessment of special benefit. And so that would include constructing, as a turnpike street, two travel lanes of Second Street from Melinda to Merlark. And then, in addition to that, dedicating additional right-of-way along the frontages of what they hope to be their property, which would be along Melinda, Wallace Road, and Edgewater Street. And so, the way the condition is written is that either the payment of that assessment of special benefit or satisfaction of the, um, condition number five would meet the recommendation. So, with, so here, I'm just trying to show, Second Street with both conditions three and five would then provide a local street connection between Wallace Road and Merlark. It would help to clean up some of the access ways, uh, along Wallace Road here. The intersection of Second and Wallace Road would likely be limited to right-in, right-out only. That is something that ODOT would need to, um, be part of, since that is their highway. This, uh, vacation is in the area of a number of ongoing, uh, planning efforts, as I'm sure you all are aware. The, so I just wanted to highlight the Salem River Crossing project. These rights-of-way proposed for vacation are not needed for the preferred alternative that, um, has been identified. The West Salem Business District Action Plan is ongoing, and the rights-of-way, once again, that are proposed for vacation would not be needed to support the draft recommendations, recognizing, of course, that they are draft. There, if a grade-separated crossing of Wallace Road at Second Street, um, advances, there would need to be some street modifications at that intersection. Uh, we have communicated that with the Goodwill Industry Representatives. So, in conclusion, the staff recommendation is to approve this vacation with the conditions as contained in the staff report.
All right. Thank you very much. Is the applicant present and wanting to speak?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counselors. For the record, my name is Mark Shipman. I'm a land use attorney, uh, with Sawfield Griggs, 250 Church Street, uh, South, Suite 200, Salem, Oregon, 97301. Uh, I'm here this evening on behalf of the property owner and petitioner in this matter, Cascade Commercial Development. I've got a couple of brief comments I'd like to make, uh, towards the application. Uh, first, we believe the proposed right-of-way, uh, and vacation and redevelopment of Second Street will be better with respect to traffic flows, uh, and encouraging mixed travel mode, mixed travel modes, as staff noted in the staff report, um, versus a development using these existing First Street and Lincoln Streets. Approving the proposed vacation, we believe, will be more harmonious for the transportation system in this area versus not approving it. Second, we believe that the proposed vacation is more about improving the traffic flow in this area, uh, and then less about goodwill going in. While we believe the preliminary project that Goodwill has been illustrating in the past meetings would be a benefit for West Salem, whether Goodwill develops a new facility on this site or not is not the driving factor for this petition. Improving traffic flow and street connectivity is. Third, this application satisfies all the mandatory approval criteria for a vacation of this type. And finally, this is just a good request. We agree with the staff report. We feel that staff's done a good job as far as, um, outlining the issues and with respect to putting in the conditions of approval, as well as the alternative conditions of approval. And the petitioner and the property owner in this, in this matter agrees to all of those. Uh, we would, uh, urge that you approve this application according to the staff recommendation, and I'm happy to address any questions if you have, uh, any of the petitioner or property owner this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Are there questions for Mr. Shipman? Uh, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Shipman. I take it, then, that you would rather do number five than number four?
Uh...
Of the conditions.
Of the conditions?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, we probably would.
Okay. And, um, I guess, oh, I'll say, I have another question for staff, I guess, as to how that would be implemented and when that decision needs to be made. I don't think that's a question for you, but if, if you had to make the decision, you'd say we want number five?
Uh, I, I think at this point, we'd say we want number five, but I think the way that the, the condition is written is it provides some flexibility in there, and I think that if, if, um, if goodwill goes in, that gives them the flexibility to be, to make that choice and decide when they want to do it. Alternatively, if they don't go in, that also gives the, the property owner and, uh, the flexibility as well. So, I, I really like how those conditions lay out.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Shipman?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Is there a neighborhood association representative here tonight? All right. I'm just going to proceed down the list, then, of those who've signed up to testify. I see Jerry Basinger, followed by Kathy Hammond, Hammond, Hanon. Yes, thank you.
Steve, it's first, Steve Pfeifer?
Is Steve Pfeifer or just the end of Jerry Basinger?
All right. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Pfeifer?
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, members of the council. My name is Steve Pfeifer, address 1120 Northwest Cooch, 97209 Portland, Oregon. I'm a land use attorney with the firm of Perkins Coie, and I've had the opportunity to represent Goodwill Industries of the Columbia Willamette for over 25 years now, which has involved a lot of various projects over time, but probably the most interesting part is they, as they've matured as developers of real property, from what many of us know as small stores sprinkled throughout the state, to more recently, projects of the note that we'll show you tonight. We're in the unusual position, as you know from listening to Mark, we're not the owners of this property, but we're a contingent purchaser. I can tell you now that, while we're not the applicant, we do support these, the streak, the conditions that are before you, and obviously, the approval itself. What I'll do now, though, because we are limited by our fact that we're not an applicant to a three-minute or a series of three-minute presentations, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Jerry Basinger, who's our architect, who will illustrate what the development that we would like to undertake on the property, should we be able to go forward, would look like, followed by Kathy Hamon, who is with Goodwill, and will discuss a little bit more of what Goodwill's mission is, both at the site and beyond. Otherwise, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions? All right. We'll proceed.
Thank you.
Can you start the second one?
Welcome.
Mayor Peterson and Commissioners, my name is Jerry Basinger, President of Basinger Partners Architecture. I won't repeat Julie's presentation because I thought she did a great job, uh, so I'll just try to add and fill in. Uh, let's see if I can get the mouse to operate. There we go. Uh, the site, as you know, is a, uh, site that was developed, uh, somewhere between a hundred years ago and 50 years ago, but probably nothing more recent than that. Uh, the property is shown in red there. It's a little hard to see, street vacated. And, uh, most of the buildings, excuse me, all but one building on the site will be demolished. The one is, uh, west of, uh, Melinda, the, uh, what's currently occupied by CrossFit. So, as Julie had testified, uh, we have a significant street improvement to make in Second. Frontage improvements along Wallace and Edgewater, uh, new street put in where none exists on Melinda. And then, we're proposing, uh, at, um, city request, or, you know, certainly in open discussion, uh, extending Second Street, uh, from Melinda to Merlark. Uh, it is consistent, uh, with the West Salem, uh, Business District Action Plan, the Salem River Crossing Preferred Alternative Studies, and, uh, we have looked at the implications of an underpass or overpass at Second Street. And I have endorsements in the packet, uh, from the West Salem Neighborhood Association, who we met with back in December, and the West Salem Business Association, who we met with, I believe, last month. So, this actually is an illustration from the, uh, River Crossing Project. Uh, the site is shown in green, and as we have had discussions, we understand that the, uh, path that would be taken potentially would be on the opposite side of Edgewater from, from where the site is located. Uh, this is an illustration, again, from that same report of the underpass. It's second Wallace would remain at grade, and, uh, this would be excavated out. So, the impact on the site, once the street is vacated, uh, initially, uh, Second Street would be improved, we think, with a right-in, right-out access, but again, uh, there are discussions with ODOT to be completed. And in the future, uh, it would likely lead to the closure of the eastwardly driveway on Second, uh, to accommodate the slope for an underpass. Uh, this is a picture from the intersection. This is a perspective rendering of what, uh, Goodwill proposes to build, which are, uh, boutique shops, if you will, at the corner and along Wallace. This is a similar development that Goodwill did in Portland. And, uh, really, the pictures in there just illustrate that they will build, uh, a high-quality development. It's hard to see, but there's outdoor seating and that, the stop. And the Goodwill itself sits relative to Wallace, back in behind, uh, the two shop buildings, and, uh, will be built right up to Edgewater. Uh, there's a grade difference, uh, about four feet that we have to fill to get above the 100-year flood plain. And, uh, so we've moved the entry back away from Edgewater so we can have ADA access at that point. So, addressing the assessment of special benefit, we agree with the staff recommendation. Uh, I've submitted a letter, uh, April 28th, which is Exhibit Six in your packet, and, uh, essentially, it shows that the, uh, too quick. Uh, the benefits, uh, we don't disagree with the cost of the benefit, but, uh, Goodwill will end up spending or donating more land and, uh, spending more money by about 25,000 than that amount. So, it's 197,000 versus the proposed assessment of 172. And, uh, it just seemed that, uh, it makes sense to accommodate the condition as written by staff. Finally, uh, this is not in any of the illustrations. If I punch one button, it shows that when Goodwill develops, they are a destination retailer. In 2011, they opened a new store at Halsey and 122nd. As you can see, the bouncing projects coming in. Uh, we believe that that led directly to seven other projects at the intersection, an investment, uh, exceeding the initial Goodwill project by many times in jobs and in impact.
Excuse me, Mr. Basinger, but I have to draw your attention to, your time is up. Can you wrap up quickly?
Uh, you're right at the slide.
You're right. You're right at the conclusion. That's really well timed. Okay.
So, the project will transform a key intersection. We know that it's a, a keystone, if you will, for the Edgewater and West Salem, uh, districts, uh, will improve access and circulation and safety in and around the site, initiate the city's vision of, of pedestrian district in the Edgewater corridor, and finally, act as a catalyst for further development.
Great. Thank you. And are there questions? Counselor Benjamin, and then Counselor Benars?
Are you going to use any of the existing trees?
No, because of the four-foot fill requirement.
Okay. And I didn't see a whole lot of trees in the artist's rendering, but there, theoretically, could there be more?
Uh, yes. Uh, we, um, still, after the street vacation, have a replat, the site and design review process to go through, as well as the normal permitting process. Our plans have not been developed to look at those details, but we will.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Are there further questions? Yes, Counselor Benars?
My, my question was answered. It was exactly that. I know there's a tremendous amount of tree canopy on the land, but because of the fill that's going in there, and I know that the topography of that land dips way down, I mean, it used to flood in the wintertime.
It does. Essentially, uh, the railroad right-of-way was right at the elevation that we need to meet across most of the site, or within a foot of it. So, there's really nothing there that can remain without extraordinary circumstances. We did look at whether there were, uh, trees of significant value, and there are not. There's no white oaks, for example.
So, the other question I had on this was, had to do, Counselor Anderson had asked part of the question in reference to Second Street from, uh, Melinda to Merlark. The other question was from Melinda to, to Wallace Road, which is to the east. The question that that is either a performance bond, because I think it's still, the site is still in, that road is still under development or design, I think, and public comment, is it not? So, nothing you're planning to do at the moment, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. What we're planning to do would be to meet the proposed staff condition, that we do a three-quarter street improvement from Melinda to Wallace, recognizing that some part of that may be removed at a future date if the over, underpass goes in.
Not just, not just do the performance bond. You need that for access to your, your land.
Well, we want to build it, because we think that it will provide a great alternative to First Street at a safer location.
I just don't want to see good money being spent after bad, in the sense that if they did with the under, the underpass, which was one proposal that's been out there, the West Salem Business Plan, um, I'd hate to see that money being spent and then come back.
Uh, so would we, uh, because we are taking our access, for example, for truck, uh, movements on Second.
Okay. Thank you.
So, it becomes important that that, that remain, once it's built, even if it does...
Still remains that the access to the site is on Wallace Road, only southbound Wallace Road, and the only other way to get to it is on, I guess, on Edgewater.
On Edgewater, essentially.
Period.
Yep. Well, a guy could go around to Merlark.
Yeah, and then up Second.
Come back. Yep, backtrack.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Thank you very much. And next is Kathy Hanon. Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kathy Hanom, and I am the Goodwill's Director of Operations. And I've worked with them for nearly 13 years. In that time, I've opened and relocated, uh, about 35 stores. I know Goodwill to be a top-quality, community-centric nonprofit focused on helping people with barriers to employment find jobs. With a $10 million budget, this redevelopment project will bring construction jobs, goodwill jobs, and other retail jobs to the area. The additional payroll for this location will be more than a million dollars. Last year, in the Salem area, Goodwill's payroll was more than 6.6 million dollars. Excuse me. Also, our Salem Job Connection Program provided more than 24,000 services and helped more than 1,300 people find jobs in 2014. Those services... Those services are provided to Salem-area residents who have difficulty finding a job, primarily because they either didn't finish school, they have background issues, language barriers, or a disability. Virtually all of our services are funded through our retail program. Last year, Goodwill collected more than $13 million pounds of donated materials from the Salem area. We are nationally recognized for our commitment to the environment and have won national awards for our efficiency in diverting materials from landfills. Thanks to our architect, Jerry Basinger, you've seen our plans for top-quality West Salem development. And if we are allowed the street vacations necessary to proceed with this new project, we will provide new jobs to West Salem, add additional payroll, and nearly triple the existing tax revenue by our tenant spaces. As you know, the West Salem Neighborhood Association and the West Salem Business Association support this project, and we certainly appreciate their support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. And next is Jennifer Schreiber. Welcome.
Thank you.
And you have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on, and then at the end of three minutes, the red light comes on.
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Jennifer Schreiber. I own the Reader's Guide bookstore on Edgewater, which would be backed up pretty much right to the Goodwill. My concern, actually, has already been brought up, is the flooding. What street improvements are going to be made on Edgewater Street and what is Melinda Street? Because right now, when it rains, the water runs right down Melinda, pools right behind my building, and my concern is what's, you know, we've already had to build a berm for our parking lot because of the flooding. So if there is a development, what kind of, you know, I have a bookstore, I really don't need it flooded. So that's one of my, you know, main, that's why I'm kind of opposing this. I mean, I would love to see the property developed, not necessarily the Goodwill's, since they are a competition of mine, because I sell books and they sell books. So that's also one of my concerns as a small business owner. When larger businesses come in, is, you know, what's going to happen with my business, too? But yeah, my biggest concern right now, as I'm listening to everything, is the development of First Street, because the part would still be open as First Street behind my building. And that's where we get the big, I mean, it can be about a foot deep when we have a really good heavy rain. And so my concern is, are there going to be street improvements along Edgewater with everything? That's, I guess, pretty much all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Are there questions? All right, thank you. Appreciate you coming down. Was there anyone else here this evening that wanted to testify during this hearing and didn't have a chance to get their name on the list? Okay, we now move to rebuttal, if the applicant so desires. No, no rebuttal. Oh, yes, all right.
For the record, Jerry Basinger, we have done preliminary stormwater design for the site, and we're obligated to take care of the water that hits the site, treat it so that it runs off in an appropriate tree, clean manner, and will otherwise meet the city conditions for approval of the development.
Okay. Are there any questions from counselors regarding that? Counselor McCoyd, and then Counselor Benars?
So, to put that in my layman's language, so I understand it, you're raising your building four feet, but what you're saying is, even though it's raised four feet, it's not going to cause any problems for the neighbor behind them, behind the site, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Benars?
So the question on the stormwater runoff, are you having to treat that water? Is it going through a bio-swell?
We will treat the water per city requirements. Offhand, don't have our engineer here, so I don't know if we're required to retain or detain water in the site.
Okay.
Again, it's a development condition, and we're taking it one step at a time, and we will get to that design before the next submittal to the city.
All right, any further questions? All right, thank you very much. We'll now have questions of staff. Ms. Warneke, okay. Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Benars, followed by Counselor Benjamin.
With your permission, Mayor, I have a few questions.
Okay.
First one is, door number four or door number five? Which is your preference? Does it make any difference?
No, it really doesn't make any difference.
Then, you talked about, if you could put up the slide, one of the slides that shows the site. Julie, please.
What I'm working on.
And my question is, Rachel, one of the road, closest to Wallace Road, Second, you said it was going to be a three-quarter development. I'm not sure what that means. And I guess I don't need to know if you will, but is the development then going west on Second Street, which should be door number five, is that going to be the same kind of development as Second Street running east toward Wallace Road?
No.
Okay.
So the, I'm going to go to a different slide here.
Yeah, they look different in that slide.
Right, and that's on purpose, although it's not exactly engineered. The section that is along their frontage here, from Wallace to Melinda, would be required, even through the development process, to be a three-quarter street improvement, which means curb gutter sidewalk on their side, so the south side, and then two travel lanes in each direction, and also dealing with the stormwater on the north side. However, the future development of the property to the north would then have to do their sidewalk.
That would be the other quarter.
That would be the other quarter.
Okay.
On the other section, the number five section, that would, the condition indicates a, essentially a turnpike street, is what we call them. So one travel lane in each direction. The frontage improvements would come with future development of those properties.
Development along that strip.
Yes.
Okay. Then, on that slide, and I take the, you know, I go across the Union Street bike rigs all the time and come out, and could you, with your little pointer, show where that hits Wallace? Does it hit right at Second Street there? Oh, you're showing it that side, okay?
Oh, yeah, I can point the other way.
Yeah, no, that's fine, point this way, okay. So, right across there, that's where it comes off the railroad bridge, and you've got to go left or right there.
Correct.
Okay, and that is where the underpass, proposed underpass would be?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, okay. Then, this really has nothing to do with this procedure right here, because I know we're going through all sorts of, you know, this is the first step in a long step. But I am looking at the site plan, which shows two automobile entryways off Edgewater, and I'm wondering at some point when that could be addressed. Could we potentially only have one? Because I understand what the problems are. The more curb cuts you get, the more it slows up traffic, and the more problems ensue. So, you don't need an answer, you don't need to answer me right now, but I would appreciate it if, when you look at the design review site, that's not going to be you, but somebody will look at the possibility of only having one exit and entrance there, rather than the two. Thank you very much.
Counselor Benars, followed by Counselor Benjamin.
So, two simple questions. First one had to do with, can you talk to me, or tell me a little bit more about stormwater mitigation? I'm not expecting that the development of this corner is going to solve the problem in the whole West Salem district, but in the immediate area that it is impacting, they're going to be required to mitigate all runoff from their impervious surfaces, as well as the street improvements around it that are sized for utilities. So could you tell me a little bit more, what you know about that, please?
I could do that. Robert Chandler, Assistant Public Works Director. Salem Revised Code, Chapter 71, and Stormwater has requirements for new and redevelopment specific for stormwater. And it has requirements for managing the stormwater flows, for flow control, and installing treatment facilities. Both those requirements are triggered by the amount of total new plus replaced impervious surface. This development triggers both those requirements for treatment and flow control, so they would be required to meet those technical standards. And in accordance with how that is set up, is, among those standards would be to implement green stormwater infrastructure, swales, trees, permeable paving, perhaps, to the maximum extent feasible, and still meeting the criteria. So there are requirements in the code that they have to meet.
So the second question I have, I think, might go to our city attorney at this point. And the question I had was, in the procedure of making our decision about the vacating of this property, are we allowed to use the issue of how many jobs are created off this property as an aspect of our decision-making process?
Well, this isn't actually proposing any development. It's just vacating the right of it.
Just vacating.
There's no development, and there's no jobs being created through a vacation. Your based, your decision is supposed to be based on the criteria, one of which is whether the vacation is of the public interest, so in that grand calculus, you could consider that. However, you know, this isn't a development, this is just a road vacation.
Okay, thank you. Well, it has come up, that issue's come up before, what we can and cannot consider, Bill.
All right, Counselor Benjamin?
I just wanted to bring up that there is a significant amount of tree canopy in that area, understanding that to raise the building up and everything like that, that's going to have to be taken down. But I'd like to, at some point, find out how much can be replaced or is required to replace that tree canopy. A lot of the Goodwills that I've been to and seen, they're kind of sparse. They don't have a lot of trees, but oftentimes, it's because they're located in a strip mall. This kind of looks like an opportunity to kind of be a jewel in the area with additional trees. We don't want to lose any more canopy than we already have. Thank you.
Okay, are there further questions of staff? All right, seeing none, we will close this hearing and begin deliberation. Let's see, Counselor Lewis, are you going to make a motion? I see Counselor Bennett's name is on part of this. Counselor Nanki, perhaps you're prepared with a motion?
Yeah. And I would move approval of the vacation with conditions as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Lewis to move forward with the recommendations of staff. Is there discussion? No discussion? All right, then we'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, I think we'll take just a moment and let people leave who want to leave, and stretch our legs just a minute. We have one more public hearing? Yes. Oh, yes, I do, thank you very much. I do want, I'm sorry, Mr. Chandler, I do want to make, ask for a special motion to suspend the rules, so that Mr. Connect might be able to testify now, rather than to have to wait until later because of his bus schedule. So Mr., so a motion, is there a second?
Yeah, so moved.
So moved and seconded, thank you. It's moved by Counselor Anderson, and seconded by Counselor Benars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Connect, how are you?
Thank you, Madam Peterson and the City Council. As you all know, there are several of you in here, Diane Dickey. I am a great advocate for people with disabilities in this community. And I see that the parking thing here, and I would like to address, I saw it in the paper today, vehicles with wheelchairs and place cards and emergency vehicles have responded, would be exempt from the parking fees and time limits. You know, stop and think about it for a few minutes. We just celebrated Memorial Day, and for the veterans who fought and died for our freedom, for this country, and the ones that have come back from the war with disabilities, they have this problem up in Portland. I understand what's going on here. But by the same token, we have, you know, I realize that parking is limited downtown, but by the same token, people have to have places to park. I realize that there's an exception to, or, well, that's what I'm saying, saying there's a bad apple in every barrel. There are some people that do abuse the system, I will admit that. But I would ask you to take this into consideration. If you do that, you're doing a disservice to the people with disabilities and to our, and keep in mind, when you're doing this, keep in mind all our service personnel that have sacrificed for our freedoms with disabilities. Some of them have to have vans with wheelchairs, and they have to have a space so long for that ramp to come out, out and so forth. And I realize this, and I know what's going on, and around the Capitol, that gets to be quite a problem, too, in parking. But I just thought I would throw that out tonight, but I will be down here on June the 8th again. And so, thank you for allowing me to address this issue. And every so often, I do, I do contact our ADA Technical Center up in Tacoma. They take in five states. They take in Montana, Alaska, southwest Washington, Montana, and Oregon. They take in five states. They cannot give us legal advice, but they can give us some recommendations and help us in that matter, but they can't give us legal advice. So every so often, I do contact them, and I will send them a copy of this. But we do, but we, but I'm sure that you're aware that you do have to comply with the ADA.
Absolutely, thank you so much. We appreciate your testimony. Were there any questions from counselors? All right, thank you. Thank you very much for coming tonight to testify. All right, we will proceed now with agenda, and we are back to public hearings to Item C, prohibiting smoking on city-owned property. Would the city recorder please introduce the hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding Ordinance Bill Number 10-15 relating to prohibiting smoking on city-owned property, amending Salem Revised Code, Chapter 45, Smoking.
Thank you. And Mr. Chandler, are you here to speak to us?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, City Councilors, I am Robert Chandler, and the Assistant Director of Public Works. I'm here to provide the staff presentation on Ordinance Bill 10-15, which is to prohibit smoking on city-owned property. To begin with, Ordinance Bill 10-15 prohibits smoking on all city-owned property. It does not apply to properties in the public rights of way. I will talk about that in a moment. What you have before you tonight is engrossed Ordinance Bill 10-15, which has been amended from the bill that went through first reading at last council, where we staff recommend that the bill be amended to prohibit smoking on city-owned property, but that prohibition not apply to properties leased by the city, owned by the city, but leased to other parties. And I'll talk about that in a moment as well. We're here because in October 2014, Council approved a motion directing staff to prepare this ordinance. At the last council meeting on May 11th, Council conducted first reading and then set the date for this public hearing, the purpose of which is to hear testimony and following deliberations, take action on the ordinance bill. Ordinance Bill, it amend Salem Revised Code, Chapter 45, which was approved by Council late last year and became effective January of this year, and a few provisions are currently in that code. First of all, the definition of smoking, as you see here, some key points on that. First of all, the definition of smoking does include electronic cigarettes. It does, the presence or absence of nicotine is not a factor as to whether you are smoking. And the definition of smoking does apply to both tobacco and cannabis, and pretty much anything that can be smoked. SRC, Chapter 45, has an enforcement subsection violating the code as an infraction. The penalty for their first infraction will be no more than $50. If there's a second infraction, the maximum is $150. And if you still haven't learned, the third and subsequent infractions, $250. The Ordinance Bill for city-owned properties, this is an example of some of the city-owned properties where this ordinance would apply. Key points on this thing, it does apply to all of our parcades, which are owned by the city. It applies to City Shops Complex. It will apply to locations outside of the jurisdictional boundaries of the city of Salem, our Willow Lake Water Pollution Control Facility, the wastewater treatment plant located north of Kaiser, as well as the Garen Island Water Treatment Facility there near Statham. The proposed ordinance will not apply to pri- The proposed ordinance will not apply to property owned by the Salem Housing Authority or the Urban Renewal Agency, and as written, it does not apply to sidewalks or planting strips that abut city-owned property. Our engrossed ordinance bill, as I said before, is intended for this proposed ordinance to not apply to properties we own but leased to others, and here's some examples of business leases that we currently have at the Salem Municipal Airport. There's also property that we lease for agricultural purposes, orchards. So as I said, the bill does not extend to the sidewalk or planting strips, that's the purpose where Salem Revised Code Chapter 45, it was created, and it was designed for properties where if they have a no-smoking ordinance, if they can meet certain criteria, they can apply, and that no-smoking ordinance would leave, would extend beyond their boundaries onto the city-owned rights-of-way. The criteria, first of all, they must have a campus-wide no-smoking policy. There's a minimum amount of street frontage for them to qualify. The property requesting this sidewalk or street or planting strip prohibition needed to meet one of these service, public service use classifications out of Salem Revised Code Chapter 400, and you're required to make a request to the Director of Public In your packets, there's a, some information provided in a question-and-answer format, just a few of those things. One of the questions is, does it apply to parking lots? The answer is yes. You cannot smoke in our parking lots. Related to that, you cannot smoke in a vehicle, in a parking lot, the ordinance doesn't care whether you're inside or outside of a public vehicle or a private vehicle. The ordinance has no provisions for establishing, for the city manager or director to establish no-smoking areas, or specific smoking ordinances, areas. And other jurisdictions have indeed banned smoking, or some form of smoking and tobacco use here in Oregon, at least eight counties and no fewer than 40 cities have some form of ordinances prohibiting the use of tobacco. We met the, more than the minimum qualifications for a public hearing, this is some of the notices that we posted, both City Hall, City Parks, a lot of email that went out, Statesman Journal had a public notice published, and then there was an article on this and notifying people of the date and time of this public hearing in the Sunday version, edition rather, of the Statesman Journal. Today, as of 5:00 PM today, 11:00, written, pieces of testimony which you have in your packet, six comments were in favor, there were five commenters who were opposed to the ordinance bill. Just an example of one of the ones in favor, I'll just read this, in today's society, most people do not smoke, for my children, including my four-month-old baby, to have to smell cigarettes is terrible and damaging to our health. An example in opposition, I love our city parks and use them often, but I'm opposed to this ordinance banning smoking on city properties, I think it's pushing too hard and too far. So again, it's Ordinance Bill 10-15, engrossed ordinance bill prohibiting smoking in all city-owned property, exempting property that we own but we lease to other persons. And Madam Mayor and Councilors, that concludes my presentation, and I'll be back after following public testimony.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we have several people who've signed up to testify, so I will call two at a time. Ginger Rhine followed by Alex Phillips.
I have a second one.
Are you? All right, apparently Ginger has perhaps left. Welcome, you're Alex Phillips?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Alex Phillips, 1311 Schumeketa Street Northeast, I'm here to speak as a private citizen. And if I came before you tonight to ask if I could burn known toxins and known carcinogens in our parks, what would you tell me? Well, of course, you'd deny that, that'd just be ridiculous if I said, can I go burn a bunch of carcinogens? But because of the tobacco industry lies that still have a grip on the way we think, we're not, we don't see smoking in that way. I think that the toxins should be removed from our public places, because breathing is something that everyone has to do, it's more than a right. Enforcement is not an issue. I have studied smoking ordinances, mostly in Montana, but in other places since I was a really little kid. This issue has meant a lot to me when I first started complaining to my parents about smoking in front of me, and then in college I studied it, and also later on. Enforcement is not an issue. What happens is the education, that people know the law is there, almost all people will respect the law. The few people that don't, well, whatever, we wish we had that kind of compliance on most other laws. So I urge you to vote yes on this, and don't take it as the, when you're looking at public comment, if it, if the opposition is more strong, it's a place to take leadership to protect our health and not to listen, to continue to listen to the tobacco industry and their lies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just before you go away, are there questions from any councilors? All right, thank you for coming down tonight, we appreciate your testimony. Casia Quillenin followed by James Wright.
Good evening again, Casia Quillenin, you may never get rid of me this evening. I am your current Parks Chair Board, and I'm here to tell you that we did in fact review this ordinance and decided to pass it on to you for your consideration and hopefully approval. We did think very seriously about the issue of enforcement. In fact, I brought up that issue because it was a concern of mine, and as the previous speaker has indicated, and I believe as various research studies have shown, it's a question of education. And so we believe that this ordinance can go through, maybe should go, well, should go through, but one of the things that we would recommend doing is posting signs in the parks saying that this is a smoke-free zone, you know, please take advantage of the fact that we're trying to increase the benefits to our health. Now, as a person, I pick up a mile and a half of city street every day, and I pick up Englewood Park every day. Now, I did that this morning, and I should have brought in my bag of trash. I've been meaning to do this for several years now, and just hold it up so that you can see the kind of stuff that I pick up, and a lot of it is cigarette butts. There's also fast-food wrappers and cigarette cartons and packages and, I mean, all sorts of other stuff. But I personally, just for me, would be happy to not pick up so many cigarette butts, and I can tell you where they are in Englewood, all you have to do is go around the benches and the picnic tables, and walk around the paths, and you can get hundreds of them in the space of a very short period of time. So I would be very happy if this would pass, I think the Parks Board would be happy if it would pass, it would cut down on our maintenance, and I think a little education, educational signs and so forth along that road will help considerably. And it would also give, in the event we have an issue and we happen to have a police officer coming by, it would give them an opportunity to say, hey, by the by, you know, we have an ordinance in place, please don't smoke in our parks. That's all I have to say.
Well, thank you very much. Questions? I see hands up, all right.
Oh, my God.
Counselor Dickey followed by Counselor Benjamin, followed by Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor. Casia, thanks for coming down twice tonight, appreciate that. And you might have already answered this in your testimony, but did the Parks Board discuss maintenance at all?
Did they discuss, we discussed mostly enforcement, you know, how is this going to be enforced? You know, so, I mean, it's always, maintenance in parks is always an issue, and one of the things that Parks is going to try to address, I hope this year, is improving our maintenance standards. And I'm sure that the normal people who go around and collect trash out of parks see as many cigarette butts as I do.
Right, thank you.
I can even tell you where people live based on their cigarette butts located in the park. Who smokes what brand.
Counselor Benjamin?
Thanks for coming down this evening.
Sure.
Out of curiosity, if this were to pass, we put signs up and whatnot, and you're in the park enjoying it, and then somebody lights up a cigarette, what do you do?
Well, I think that probably any person who is there could very politely point out, and I would do this simply because I'm pretty aggressive about my park.
Sure.
So, as our Parks Chair knows, I mean, he's, every meeting on there, this is my park, I'm taking care of it, I would go up and politely say, oh, excuse me, do you realize this is a no-smoking area in the public park? And usually that's my understanding from people who've had that experience, is that that's usually enough. And if somebody wants to, you know, get aggressive about it, fine, then you just walk away. I mean, as our previous speaker pointed out, not everybody's going to comply, but the vast majority of people will.
So if this law wasn't in effect and somebody lit up a cigarette next to you, could you just let them know, hey, can you not smoke around me, and then make sure you put your cigarette butt in the trash?
Oh, I could probably do that too, but, you know, this gives a little more oomph to the, to the suggestion. I don't want to be in a fistfight with somebody in the park over cigarette smoke.
Oh, is that, is that what would happen?
No, I don't know whether that's what would happen.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, you depend on your park, you know, depend on the people in the park to act in a rational manner.
So then, so then this law would actually be better for public safety in regards to violence and stuff? Is that what you're saying?
Not necessarily, I'm just saying, I don't know that there's a direct correlation to that, but it does give you an opportunity. I mean, you've had this, I'm sure everybody's had this experience at one time or another where they wanted to say, make a comment to somebody that something was happening, but they didn't feel that they had the authority to do that, you know, to say, hey, knock it off, you know, please don't do this, it's affecting everybody. And this would give us an opportunity, because it would be posted, it would be very clear for people who were walking around through the park, if that came, if they came across that situation, if it was truly bothering them to simply say, yes, it's really bothering me, and we do have an ordinance, please, you know, please be aware that you could in fact be fined for doing this. So you put it, you phrase it in a way that makes it sound like you're trying to help them out rather than them helping you out.
So that would empower the individual to be able to stand up for their own air quality?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bernard?
So one of those, was Five Letters in Opposition has mentioned about e-cigarettes and saying that e-cigarettes don't put out butts, don't have cigarette butts that you have to throw on the ground, and I just, I just wanted to make you aware that that's just another one of those aspects. I hadn't thought of it that way, you know? I'm not a smoker, don't like it, but gee, you're right, no butts. So it, maybe that's one thing about, you know, not allowing any smoking whatsoever, but for some people, it means actually a cleaner world. The other question I had, you represent the Parks Board, so my question kind of runs, you started to go on to about your street as opposed to the parks. The board is against smoking in the parks, did they discuss about other areas outside of the parks as well?
Just the list that you saw up there on the, on the board. No, I'd simply bring that to people's attention, just to let you know that in addition to all the other hats that I wear, I also go and clean up city streets all on my own, and I've never mentioned this before to anybody, as well as cleaning up Englewood Park every day.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time to do that, I know that we, we all work together, we'll make this a cleaner city, but...
Well, I want my neighborhood to look good, and it does look good, and I want the schools that are in my neighborhood to look good, and I don't want kids around cigarettes, period. Now, I don't know how much clearer I can be about that.
Thank you, Casia.
You're welcome.
All right, any more questions? All right, thank you. Oh, what, I'm sorry, Counselor Lewis?
Just a couple, and I'm not purporting suggesting these, but want to get your comments. One, it seems odd to me to disallow smoking in the city parks, but the sidewalks around the parks, you can con, smoke all you want.
Well, I don't know this for sure, but it seems to me that with regard to some, most public buildings, like schools, you already can't smoke around public, public buildings, and that's by state ordinance if I'm not mistaken. So that's covered by some things.
Yeah, if I'm reading the, this ordinance, it looks like, unless I'm not reading it correctly, you can smoke on the sidewalks. The other question, and the ordinance does prohibit it, but it does not propose, you cannot set up designate smoking areas. What about the idea of setting up an area in a city park?
I don't know. If that's an idea, we would have to take that back to the Parks Board and ask them what they thought about all of that.
Got a hunch of what they might say?
I think most of them would probably say, no, air is air, and it's going to drift wherever it's going to drift, and would probably be against that, but I don't know that for sure, and I, you know, hesitate to say that.
Other questions from councilors for Casia Quillenin? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Can I go home now?
Yes, you can go home now. Okay. James Wright followed by Brian Hench.
Madam Pearson, my name is, for the record, my name is James Wright, I reside at 165 24th Street, Area Code 97301. I'm actually Senator, or Senator, sorry, I've been to a lot of Senate hearings recently on e-cigarette stuff, so it's, it's kind of a, it's a habit thing, and I apologize. Kind of stole my thunder there with the whole no-butts thing for the parks, that's what I was going to lead off with. I'm a member of the Northwest Vapor Association, I'm also an employee of a vape shop that is located in Kaiser, but I live in Salem. So my thing is, is that I've read studies about vapor in enclosed areas, what the effects of those are, what their effects on the outside, public effects, everything else. I mean, some people say that they would try and re-normalize smoking, but I think more is a way to allow a gateway out of smoking into something that they're not going to use, you know? Away from analog cigarettes to electronic cigarettes or inhalant delivery devices, there's a couple different phrases for them out now. There's been some talk that I've heard back and forth that the state is actually considering some exceptions for businesses and such. I haven't heard any concrete on that, so I just, if, there would be some way to get maybe an exception for electronic cigarette devices in the bill where it's concerning to large public areas, like a park or a hiking area or something like that, would be interesting. I go hiking, I'm a former smoker, 24 years, I started when I went in the Army, I got out, I was still smoking, I quit Mother's Day, Mother's Day of last year. My wife quit shortly after I did. So I've been a former smoker for over a year. I've started hiking again, I've started running, not so much with a busted knee, but that's what you get coming out of it. So if there would be some way to do an exception in a large park area, something like that, I would request it, if I can do that. Not sure how it works on this side, so... But any questions that I can answer this time?
All right, thank you. Questions? Counselor Benjamin?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so you quit smoking, are you vaping at this time?
Yes, I am.
Okay, yeah, I think it's really neat that they have that vapor, you can dumb down your nicotine intake.
I started out at 24 milligrams, I am down to 12, and my wife has started at 24, and she is down to 6 milligrams.
Let me ask you, when you used to smoke and when you vape, if, when you're around people and kids, do you whip out a cigarette anyway?
No, I never did the two at the same time, I completely dropped smoking and then switched to...
Well, I mean, if you're around kids and adults and stuff that aren't smoking, do you just whip one out and start puffing it up?
No.
Okay, or vaping out, I don't know what you call it. Vaping out, yeah.
If there are other adults not around children, no.
Okay, well, other adults, and if, and if maybe an adult looked over you and said, excuse me, can you just not, you know, smoke?
That would be, that would be perfectly fine with me, I don't have an issue with that, no.
You'd apologize, say, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much, appreciate your testimony. Brian Hench followed by Lynn Richardson?
I applaud your pronunciation of my last name, everybody else calls it Hentish, so that was pretty good. My name's Brian Hench, I live at 1126 Elm Street Northwest, 97304. I'm a former smoker, I smoked from the time I was 16 until I was 36 and quit smoking, thought perhaps I would escape some of the damages that come from smoking, and ended up with COPD and emphysema anyway. But on that note, I'm, I've gone out and done some litter patrols too, and picked up cigarette butts, and I was amazed at how much of the bag that I was picking up was composed of cigarette butts. And I don't have a problem with the no-smoking ban in city structures or in city parks, I do believe that there should be some outlet for these people, so that they can satisfy their craving. I mean, I know I quit, I quit cold turkey, my wife and I quit on the same day, and we haven't smoked cigarettes since. What I have a problem with is all of the freedoms that we seem to be taking away from people just based on the idea that we've been conditioned to paint everyone that has any kind of vaporous exhalation coming out of them as something... and we haven't smoked cigarettes since. What I have a problem with is all of the freedoms that we seem to be taking away from people just based on the idea that we've been conditioned to paint everyone that has any kind of vaporous exhalation coming out of them as something bad. And I also know people who vape, because he's my son-in-law and my daughter both quit smoking by vaping. And yet here they are putting vaping into this ordinance as though somehow or another it was equivalent to and as detrimental as smoking cigarettes or pipes or pets or chewing tobacco or any of the other things that we find disagreeable about tobacco usage. And I find that this is actually a pretty inaccurate, you know, representation of what vaping is all about or electronic e-cigarettes, if you wish to call them that. I think it's an unfortunate happenstance that they started calling them e-cigarettes before they started calling it vaping, because it's already given it the same brush of disgust that cigarettes have been painted with for so many years. And vaping, for a person like me, to walk into a room where somebody has been smoking causes me to have my lungs try to shut down on me. So I'm whipping out the vaporizer that I have with my butyral in it to try to open my lungs back so that I can breathe. But if I walk into a room that several people are vaping in at the moment, till it looks like one of those proverbial back rooms, smoking men with cigars and cigarettes, and you walk into a bank of clouds, now that would just about kill me. But walking into the same bank of vapor doesn't have any effect on my lungs at all. I find that's an interesting thing, that you should take away people's rights to do something that doesn't seem to have a harmful effect simply because of an appearance. And so I'm just asking that you consider that part of this bill, that you not take away something that can help people get away from tobacco products and maybe, just maybe, quit smoking altogether. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from councilors?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Benjamin?
Congratulations on quitting smoking.
Thank you.
Are you vaping as well?
I sometimes do, yes.
Okay, sometimes, okay.
Because of the VG that's in the vapor,
Right.
it actually helps elasticity in your lungs.
Nice.
So, yeah, sometimes I do.
Okay, so if you were out in a park somewhere and you decided to imbibe in a vape, and there was people around you or children, I mean, would you do it then? Would you vape then if there was children and adults around playing baseball or something?
I don't, I don't propose to vape in front of children or give them any ideas about starting vaping. I would never recommend to anyone that they go start vaping, just to start vaping.
Oh, yeah, I get it. But in the same, that's kind of the same line of questioning I gave your son-in-law. If you did decide there was adults around and everybody's just kind of hanging out and you decided to start vaping and somebody looked over at you and said, "Could you not do that here?" Would you stop or would you?
Oh, yeah.
Would you go on my freedom box kind of thing?
You're stepping on my freedoms, man. No, actually, it depends on, you know, the situation completely.
Sure.
If there's somebody that disagrees with me doing it there, then I don't have a problem not doing it.
Right, right. Yeah, okay.
I'm not addicted.
Right, okay.
I was addicted to cigarettes, but I'm not addicted to vape.
Do you think that people that vape or even smoke nowadays have kind of got a little different mentality in regards to where they light up? Because I used to smoke back in the 70s and 80s and we just lit up anywhere we wanted to.
Sure. I think that there's a big change. There's been a sea change in the way that people smoke and the amount that they smoke.
Right.
When people tell me today that they've, they smoke a pack a day or half a pack a day, I wonder, "How in the world do you do that?" I smoked two and a half, three packs a day when I smoked.
Yeah, well...
I always had a cigarette lit. There was never a time that I didn't have something there. And back then, there were ashtrays everywhere.
Right, right.
Things have changed.
Fast forward today, the etiquette
Sure.
of people smoking or vaping. Do you know what that trend is?
I think the trend is for a certain feeling among some of those people that they're being pushed in and marginalized because of their habit. I think that most of them would probably refrain if asked,
Right.
just because you ask them.
Sure.
You know, it depends, I guess, on how it's asked. How do you ask it?
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Lynn Richardson followed by Emily DeMare.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Lynn Richardson, Executive Director of Deepwood Museum and Gardens at 1116 Mission Street Southeast in Salem. And we are very excited about a potential smoking ban at the parks. The 1894 Historic House, of course, is located on city property, and we regularly find cigarette butts on the porch of the Historic House as well as in the gazebo's, which are wooden and dry and old. And we're constantly worried about them sending us in flame, which would not be a good thing. And also just the number of families that we have enjoying the parks and the large-scale events that we have when I have 1,000 people coming to a Halloween children's party and people are smoking around the children, you know, we would like to have a way of stopping that. We can't, you know, right now they can light up in the park if they want to. And so our staff would love the opportunity to be able to, if this passed, to be able to go up and gently educate people that it is now a non-smoking park. But for the experience of our visitors and for the protection of our cultural heritage, I would love to see this passed. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Dickey?
Thank you for coming down. I'm curious to know if you have people using the vape pens or the e-cigarettes inside your buildings and if that has been an issue for you?
I have not seen them being used at the park. Now, they might be using them outside of where we're at in the house, but mostly it's the cigarette butts we just find everywhere in the park.
Okay, thanks.
All right, other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Emily DeMare followed by Catherine Morgan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Emily DeHare and I'm the Program Coordinator of the Marion County Health Department's Tobacco Prevention and Education Program. My role is to help organizations adopt ordinances and policies such as these, and we provide technical assistance to different organizations in the community to do so. There are many reasons why people ask why this type of policy. And the most common responses that we have are is that it eliminates or reduces secondhand smoke or vapor exposure to staff or residents, provides a healthier working environment for City of Salem staff. It can help to decrease costs associated with tobacco-related chronic illnesses and loss of productivity. And it helps address social norms in the community about healthier behaviors and modeling to our youth. There are several jurisdictions, as was noted in the staff presentation. We have a list of those. But there are about eight cities across Oregon that have some sort of policy in place. The ones that would most likely relate to this is City of Forest Grove and City of North Plains. Those are, were enacted last year. They prohibit smoking and tobacco use on all city property as well as at city-sponsored events. Those also do include electronic smoking products. As was also in the city report, there are nearly 50 jurisdictions across the state that have some sort of 100% or tobacco, 100% smoke-free or tobacco-free parks in city parks policies. And I would refer you to the Parks brochure that we had passed around on your desk as well as the map of Oregon that shows that. So as, because I have three minutes, I'm not going to list all 50 of those. Also, it's late, so I'll spare you those details. But the biggest question we always get at the Health Department is about enforcement and compliance. What we have done is a study across the state with counties and cities and park jurisdictions to ask about this very question. What we have found through discussions with parks and rec departments, city managers and city staff is that compliance is generally very high. There's always typically a few people who are not in compliance, and that's usually because they're not aware of the policy. There will always be a couple of people who are unhappy about it or just will continue to smoke or use tobacco anyway. But what we find is the vast majority of high compliance, and that's really due to a good communication plan and education from the get-go. So just from our experience at the Health Department, working across the state, we have found that enforcement and compliance is really not an issue, although it does seem to be the biggest question. I also want to bring to your attention new and emerging products, and vaping is a big discussion that we're having here. Due to no regulations by the FDA, e-cigarettes and vaping products are really on the rise. For example, according to the CDC, from 2011 to 2014, e-cig use among, or electronic smoking devices or e-cig use among high school students has increased nearly 800%. In 2014, more teens used e-cigs than traditional cigarette products, and that's the first year that that has ever happened. Right now, we're seeing a high use rate among minors because as we know, FDA does not regulate this product, so there's no sales restrictions to under 18. Another reason why a lot of jurisdictions are moving in this direction for those types of policies.
I have to draw your attention to, your time is up.
I'm done. Perfect timing.
Thank you. I think we're going to have some questions for you.
Absolutely.
Louis followed by Counselor Dickey.
Okay, these are my two questions. The city that have passed the ordinances, no smoking on city property, do the employees go out to the sidewalk on their break and smoke?
From what our experience is, that has been the case originally. But what we have found with the Affordable Care Act, so most employers are requiring tobacco cessation benefits to their staff, so that is communicated from the get-go, and it's really a communication plan that they've discussed saying, "We're putting this policy in place. We also recognize that we need to be good neighbors to other businesses that are surrounding them, but we want to make sure that our staff is supported for those who are interested in quitting." In Oregon, we have several resources, but the main one that we have is the Oregon Tobacco Quit Line, which is available to all residents of Oregon regardless of citizenship status. And it's a free service that everybody has access to. So what we have found is that, yes, there are some businesses or cities that have had this issue, but a great example is City of Forest Grove, and I just talked to their interim city manager yesterday, and he has said that staff compliance with this has been extremely high. They've not had one complaint from the public or city staff. And in fact, what they have found is that most of the feedback they've gotten is very supportive and high compliance of their ordinance.
Okay, but what I heard is that they would tend to gravitate to the sidewalk if it's not allowed on the property. The other, in the places where it's been outlawed in the city parks, have any of those cities designated an area in the park for smoking?
The jurisdictions that are on your map have 100% tobacco-free or smoke-free, so designated smoking areas are not allowed. There are a couple of jurisdictions that will put a smoking area in place. When we did our focus groups or our assessment of that, the jurisdictions that we had talked to, and this is in a big chart that we have sent to the city, most have said that having designated smoking areas really creates a big issue for enforcement. It creates a lot of, it can create a lot of confusion for the general public. It doesn't address the maintenance costs because there's still an area that park staff would have to maintain and clean. So yes, some do, but it's definitely not the majority.
All right, Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. Thanks for coming down tonight and staying so late. I appreciate that. So I'm curious to know about, because we heard some testimony about electronic cigarettes and like using them to quit smoking. You just talked about the tobacco quit line, and I'm just curious to know what, is that a viable way to quit? Are people quitting with electronic cigarettes and how, what, any statistics that show that that is happening?
Yes, great question. So we work closely with this Oregon Tobacco Quit Line, and we can also receive reports regarding that. We're seeing a large increase in the number of people use, accessing the tobacco quit line because it does cover electronic smoking products as well. So that is an option. What our studies are showing, and this is national research that's coming out, the thought is that electronic products are a safer alternative to smoking. Although it contains, they can contain less carcinogens because they're not typically a burned product, they are finding certain chemicals. One study that just came out of Portland State University was, found that the vapor that's emitted from these products had a much higher rate of formaldehyde than traditional cigarette products. So we have heard of stories of people, and just through testimony or conversations in our community, that some people have quit smoking, but they had, but they now vape instead. What we have found is that because they're not regulated products when they're manufactured, there's no industry standard as to what is going into the vape liquids or the vape pens. There's no standardized way how those were filled. So there's also no labeling requirements that are at a federal level as well. So it could be that you have a container with 20 milligrams, when really it has, it potentially could have 25, 30, 15. There's no real industry standard. What we're finding actually is that most people who are vaping are actually co-use with traditional cigarette products. So they may be tapering down on their cigarette use, but they're now increasing their vape use instead. Did that answer that question?
Okay, are there further questions? Counselor McCoy?
Okay, totally at the risk of sounding as old and square as I am, I've never seen anybody vape in person, just seen it on TV. So are they exhaling smoke at the same level as they would have with a cigarette? Or whatever?
Good question.
Vapors, I guess?
Just in case you wanted to see, we have a couple of examples, just so people are aware of the different types of products and what they may look like. Some look just like traditional cigarettes, but others are this melon Dew Rush flavored e-huka. So it's really hard to tell. But the amount of vapor that's emitted really is hard to know at this point because they're such new products and there's so many different types of technologies of the products that there isn't enough research at this point to say, "This is the amount of volume that's being emitted." But on average, the volume of vapor that's emitted is, tends to be higher than a traditional cigarette. And that's, you know, this is not a certified study yet. But what the idea or the understanding is because they're flavored products and they're not burning, it's easier to take longer and deeper drags of the vape pens than a traditional cigarette.
So what I'm hearing is there's no real scientific knowledge, one way or the other, whether they're better than or worse than cigarettes?
There is just studies coming out now saying, because there was this discussion about this is a safer version of a traditional cigarette, the CDC, that will take them several years to figure out. But what they have found out is that although chemicals that are in traditional cigarette products, most, some of the carcinogens that are breathed in or expelled are from the actual burning process. So some of the carcinogens, just from that actual burning, I guess, procedure is less. But what they're finding is that they're still finding really high contaminants or levels of contaminants such as benzene, formaldehyde. So some that are still potentially carcinogens. What we have seen is that the danger is really the unknown. So it's not, the FDA has not said it's a safer product. It's not an FDA-approved cessation device. So they are not promoting e-cigarettes to be used as the patcher of the gum would be because at this point, the amount of vapor that's still being emitted is still potentially harmful, but they're not exactly sure what's in it.
So are you limited to what you can vape? What kind of products? I mean, is it, is it widespread things or is it, one's nicotine or could you use marijuana in it?
You could, and we have heard of some examples out of Colorado or Washington where that's the case. I just heard a colleague say that when he went into a certain shop, they said to him, or not to him, but to somebody that was there, that you could potentially use hash oil, which is marijuana, liquid form of marijuana.
I remember that from my college days, yeah.
I won't comment to that part.
Never. I just saw my buddies do that.
But because there are no FDA or national standards, you could produce your own liquids at home. A lot of people buy nicotine online and then they can mix their, the products. The products come in, I mean, hundreds of different flavors. And because they come in flavors, it doesn't have the traditional smell of what cigarettes or marijuana would have in them because you can get them in tutti-frutti and cocktails and gummy bears and root beer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Catherine... Catherine Morgan, followed by Jody Morgan.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure. Thank you for all your long hours in service. And my name's Catherine Morgan, 2056 Hollywood Drive Northeast, member of NOLA nine years, on the board for eight. And ordinance bill number 1015 prohibiting smoking on city-owned property. I find it to be, well, smoking, I find a disgusting habit and smelly. I'm not a smoker, but I still think I find it discriminating, in the sense that discrimination is treatment or consideration of, or making a distinct in favor of or against a person or thing based on the group, class, or category to which the person or thing belongs rather than the individual merit. This includes treatment of an individual or group based on their actual or perceived membership in a certain group or social category in a way that is worse than the way people are usually treated. It involves the group's initial reaction or interaction, influencing the individual's act behavior toward the group or the group leader, restricting members of one group for opportunities or privileges that are available to another group, leading to the exclusion of the individual or entities based on a logical or irrational decision-making. I find it also, people who smoke or Americans with disabilities, I find it might cringe on that Americans with Disability Act. I don't think if I was at a park or hiking on a trail or something and I saw a veteran light up a cigar or a cigarette in a park, I don't think I would have someone to tell him or her, "I'm sorry, you can't do that," after all your years of service and stuff. I think it just is a little too much for the government to be telling people, "You can't smoke." Say in the 50s and 60s, our governor would light up a cigarette at his desk after a hard day of work. That would be legal. Today, it wouldn't be legal with this ordinance. I just think it's, as one of the emails said, a little too much, a little too hard. I feel it affects civil liberties and political rights. Civil and political rights are a class right that protects individuals' freedoms from infringement by government, social organizations, and private individuals, and which ensure one's ability to participate in the civil and political life of society and state without discrimination or repression. So I'm not a smoker, but I think someone should stick up for the people who do smoke. And whether it's cigarettes, medical marijuana, or vaping, I don't want to see people on sidewalks smoking. I think it would be nice to offer a solution, so since if it does ordinance go through, I think you guys should look at item number 10 on your ordinance bill. Does the proposed ordinance allow designated smoking areas on city-owned property? Well, if this does go through, I think you need to allow an outlet for disabled people and veterans and other people.
Thank you. I have to draw your attention to, the time is up.
First thing here, so.
Are there questions for Ms. Morgan?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Jody Morgan, followed by Mike Honan.
Hi, my name's Jody Morgan, 2056 Hollywood Drive, Northeast Salem, Oregon. We all understand that smoking stinks, and you know, smoking cigarettes is bad for you and everything like that, but it doesn't come down to that, really. It's a matter of personal rights, personal responsibilities, you know, people's ideas to be able to go and have the freedom to be able to smoke in a park, freedom to be able to smoke wherever you want. You know, I'm not a smoker myself. You know, I'm happy that they don't smoke within 10 feet of the doors. I'm happy that they don't smoke inside restaurants because now I can enjoy my food, stuff like that. But you know, it's really a little too much, I think, asking people and telling people where and when and how they can enjoy the things that they want to enjoy. Under the Constitution, we are guaranteed the freedom to pursue our, you know, happiness. And if we choose to smoke, or if we choose not to smoke, that should be up to us, not to anybody else to tell us whether or not we can do that or not, and where we can do that or not, up to a certain point. You know, you can't yell "fire" in a crowded theater. You know, like I said, I appreciate that they don't allow people to smoke in restaurants. As for vaping, you know, I vape. I haven't smoked. I started vaping because I enjoy it. It gives me a reason to stop and relax and take a look at the world around me. Gives me a reason to stop and be able to enjoy life a little bit and not feel guilty about stopping working. So, you know, I drive tanker trucks. I don't drive, I don't smoke and vape while I go down the road, not because I feel that they're dangerous. I think that the laser in my CD player is probably more dangerous than a gasoline tanker than my e-cigarette, but I don't want to give Granny a heart attack next to me. So that's about all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from counselors? All right, appreciate your testimony. Thank you for coming down. Mike Honan.
Hi, my name is Mike Honan, and I live at 245 Alice Avenue, South Salem, 97302. And I am a co-owner of a couple of vape stores here in Salem. And I would really ask the city council to consider excluding vaping and just disassociating vaping from smoking. Although there's nicotine contained in smoking and vaping, the smoke that's contained in a cigarette has up to 7,000 chemicals, and the federal government protects the cigarette companies from even revealing what those chemicals are. We have four different ingredients, main ingredients in vape e-juice, and that is propylene glycol, vegetable glycerin, nicotine, and flavoring. Now, they can contain other components, but for the most part, all those things are FDA-approved. We get them from manufacturers who disclose their chemicals, and yet the cigarette company is totally excluded from that. We don't really know what's in a cigarette because they're protected by the FDA. And so I would, I have a problem with some of the things that were said here because I think vaping is, there's no smoke. When you vape, there's no smoke in that, nothing. There's, it's water vapor, and there are nicotine. They vent, I mean, you can hear all kinds, there's so much misinformation on this subject. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. But I just would ask the city council to consider the fact of removing the idea of an e-cigarette, which it's a vaporizer, and remove that from smoking because they really are two totally different things. You can reduce the amount of nicotine in your e-cigarette to down to where it's zero. So it really adds to this component. People can really move out of the nicotine addiction very easily over time. Cigarette, I don't think the cigarette companies would be into that, but you could ask them. But I think that what I would really consider, this is really kind of interesting, I was thinking about this as people were talking, if the city council would consider allowing vaping on their properties, city properties, encouraging their employees to take up vaping and reduce their nicotine amount to where they weren't smoking or vaping at all, and move away from the whole thing. I think that is so powerful. When I got involved in this business, a good friend of my son showed up at my house and said, "I've just quit smoking." He's 31 years old. He was smoking a pack, a pack and a half a day, and he was totally excited. He said, "I just quit smoking using these e-cigarette things, these vaporizers." He says, "I want to start a business, and I want to get other people to do this." He said, "This is absolutely fantastic." And at the time, I thought, "Man, I better move." At the time, I thought, "This is awesome. I'd love to do something that really helps people." I'm getting older, you know, none of us are going to live forever. I thought, "That'd be cool. You know, that'd be nice to do something that would help people." And so I've done this. I'm amazed at the amount of, okay, I'll shut it down, at the amount of, of kind of resistance to people quitting smoking. So I would ask the city council to consider allowing vaping on city property to encourage their employees to quit smoking and then move out of vaping too. I mean, I'd go get them, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Counselor Nanke, I think, might have a question for you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to a question from Counselor McCoy earlier, the amount of vapor one would exhale can be manipulated by your mix.
It's only equivalent to the amount that you inhaled. So, just, that's a joke. You, it's water vapor. They did a study just recently, and okay, there's different devices. You've got to understand, it's like car engines. All this stuff is equipment-driven, so the more powerful the battery and the bigger the coil that vaporizes e-juice, the more amount of vapor. So there's different types of vapors. There's the vapor that's just trying to quit. He's got a little tiny e-cigarette. It produces just a little tiny bit of vapor, a little bit of nicotine, and they're quitting smoking. So they're just getting a little bit of vapor and a little bit of nicotine. They got that nicotine buzz. They feel relatively satisfied, and then they, you know, do a couple of hits and they're done. Then there's the vaping hobbyists, and these guys will get a much bigger battery, a much bigger coil, and that's what you see, every once in a while, you'll see one of these guys, and they'll blow this massive cloud of vapor. The interesting thing is, they're using very little to no nicotine in that. So those guys, because the amount of vapor that's going in, they're reducing, because you couldn't, you couldn't ingest that much, you'd fall over. So they reduce that down to almost nothing. So when you're seeing that, that is truly just propylene glycol and a little bit, mostly vegetable glycerin, a little bit of propylene glycol, and that's what gives it that big massive cloud, is vegetable glycerin, which is a sweetener. Okay, you're getting a little bit of sugar, you're probably put on weight, which may or may not kill you down the road, but that's all it is. It's mostly just sugar. So you're seeing this big cloud of vapor, you're thinking, "Oh, my God, that kid's going to die." Well, it's just water vapor. There's usually no nicotine in that at all, maybe a little bit.
So if I were to flip that ratio and go mostly glycol and very little glycerin, what would my smoke look like? Or would my vapor look like?
You know what? It's kind of one of those things where I'm not sure, but you wouldn't get as much, a lot of what the vegetable glycerin does, it creates a big creamy white cloud. The propylene glycol, I think, affects like a throat hit. So you want to reduce that. And I know this sounds weird, but when you're mimicking a cigarette, the smoker wants to emulate that. He takes a drag, and you get this burn in the back of your throat, and a lot of smokers want to emulate that, and I think the propylene glycol kind of does that. The vegetable glycerin provides the big cloud, or the, so you want to emulate that whole, the mechanics of smoking without having the damage of smoking, in a sense. And so that's what they've done. So there's tons of misinformation on this, and I think when you see these big, huge clouds, usually there's very little nicotine in it. It's mostly propylene glycol, excuse me, vegetable glycerin and a little propylene glycol. So it's 90%, or 100, 99% water vapor. I'm not sure the exact amounts, but it's mostly just water vapor. And so the studies are saying it's just like breathing the air in a room. There's, it's harmless. Nicotine is a stimulant like caffeine.
Excuse me, Counselor McCoy has a question.
Sorry.
Are you done, Counselor? Okay, Counselor McCoy.
So, back to smoking marijuana. When you're smoking a joint, you could smell it, you know, whatever, you know what's going on. If you're doing this in a vaping mechanism, can you tell that it's marijuana or not?
You know, it's interesting. We can't use our devices for marijuana with marijuana oils. The oils that, when you look at like marijuana, the oils they use are very viscous, very thick. Propylene glycol and the stuff that we use, the vegetable glycerin, has a much thinner consistency, so it can get wicked into the coil. And those oils and the waxes that they use in the marijuana are so thick, they won't even, they can't even really be drawn into the coil, so you can't use them. So that whole idea that you can, "Oh, yeah, all these guys are doing drugs," it's not the same. Other than the fact that you can sit in the same car and vape in the same car you're smoking a joint in. So yes, the battery itself can be used to use different tanks that'll burn different oils, but our tanks will not burn any, don't, you know, there's always probably some guy that can work his way around it, but they're not intended for marijuana and by and large, any, none of the products that you'd buy in a, say, a dispensary would work in one of our devices. So.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Okay. I saw Leilani's name. Did you want to testify? Thank you. This is Leilani Slama. Am I saying that right?
You are. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council.
I'm Leilani Slama. I'm here tonight representing Salem Health, and the address for that is 890 Oak Street,
Southeast here in Salem. Last year, at the request of Lamont University and Salem Health, the council approved a ban on smoking on public right-of-ways within our campuses. At that time, I testified that in spite of the fact that we were a tobacco-free campus, smoking on our sidewalks that bisected and surrounded the Salem Hospital campus muted our effort to both protect the medically fragile and also encourage a healthy lifestyle. I'm here this evening again, representing Salem Health, and to speak in support of this proposal prohibiting smoking on city-owned property. We're keenly aware of the negative consequences of smoking, and as the local community hospital, it's our responsibility to support this proposal. As you know, Salem Hospital's main campus is bordered by two city parks, Pringle and Bush. And because I know it's going to come up, I'm going to talk about the smokers in Pringle Park, which are our employees. Passage of this ordinance would provide an even larger buffer for us, for our campus from the intrusion of secondhand smoke. It would also eliminate easy access for our employees who use the parks for their smoke breaks. As an employer and as a community hospital, we welcome this change. As human beings, we recognize that it is not easy to quit smoking. It won't happen overnight. We are taking the necessary steps to encourage our employees to quit smoking, or at least, at the very least, to quit smoking while they're at work. We've revised and updated our policy so that supervisors may discipline their employees who violate the non-smoking ordinance. We offer smoking cessation classes and medical intervention where necessary. Eliminating access is another step in the right direction as we work together to encourage our entire community toward a healthy lifestyle. I encourage you to vote yes on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And there are questions. Counselor Lewis, followed by Counselor Dickey.
Okay, so let's say this ordinance passed, so you plug that dam. Where are your employees going to go next?
Well, we've had this conversation. Fortunately, because of the ordinance that was passed last year, they can't go on any of the sidewalks that surround the campus. We have a half an hour lunch and 15-minute breaks. That's not enough time for them to leave campus. So we are encouraging them, encouraging them, as I said, to not smoke while they are at work, just like they don't drink on the job and, you know, do other things that are inappropriate. We're not encouraging them to not smoke at their home. We're encouraging them to not smoke at work. We will have the ability to discipline them if they are on city sidewalks within our campus or in the parks, smoking during their work hours.
So I'm hearing you don't know where they're going to go.
I'm, what I'm telling you is that we're encouraging them that they not smoke, and then if they do smoke, they do choose to break the rules and they'll be disciplined. So just as they would be disciplined for any other violation of a work policy.
Any idea how many of your employees do smoke?
I don't have any idea. Mm-mm.
You might find out.
Too many.
Okay.
Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down and staying late. My question is about, so I know the way you're building backs up to Pringle Park, there's like a footbridge, I think. It's been a while since I've been over that way. Do you have patients that might, or friends and family have patients that, you know, maybe they're in there for an extended time or something, use that park to just, you know, take a little break, get away, go for a walk?
We do.
Okay.
So my comment is, I am actually a witness, I've been watching and frequently go down Mission Street. The construction crew that is working currently on the new facility actually crossed Mission Street at winter at the, and stay on the sidewalk, actually, and smoke across the street from, so if you're familiar with that T intersection, it abuts the parking lot for Bush Pasture Park. If this law passes, they can't smoke in the park, they can't smoke on the campus on the adjoining sidewalks. They're stuck going to, I mean, I can point out whether it's, whether it's going to be on the south side of Mission Street or the north side of the park, was it the park, not Parkway, but, you know, around, on the other side of the stream is what I'm trying to get to. It's still going to be in that area. They're still going to have an area that they're going to be able to go to. So there really is no solution that I've seen.
There isn't. And I mean, we've had this discussion because it does, you know, it pushes them out, and the last thing we want is somebody standing on the street corner wearing a Salem Hospital employee badge, smoking a cigarette. I mean, that's not good press for us. press for us. So, we're working diligently with our supervisors and our employees to try and figure out a solution to this problem, but it's not going to happen overnight.
Other than having a designated, I'm sure that has come up before, a designated area?
Designated area doesn't really send the message we want to send. We don't want them to smoke on our campus anywhere because, you know, we have medically fragile patients. We have people who are entitled to clean air, people that should not have to deal with second-hand smoke. And even having a designated area, they'll still be faced with that. There isn't a designated area on our campus where patients won't be.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McCoy, followed by Counselor Anderson.
So, you mentioned something. You said if the smoking was banned in the park, you would have a way to sanction your employees if they were smoking in the park. And I'm curious what that would be, since they would be off hospital property on a break, on their own time, smoking in a park instead of on your property, how you could sanction them.
If it's against city ordinances and they're in the park smoking, then they're violating a city ordinance, and we could discipline them based on that.
Don't want to work at the hospital, I guess.
Don't smoke and work at the hospital.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down, LaLani. You've been present for this whole discussion about vaping and e-cigarettes and all that. Does the hospital, all this is new to me too, and I'm not as old as Counselor McCoy, but I'm getting there. I'll be older after tonight. Does the hospital have a position on vaping and e-cigs versus the tobacco smoke? You know, I don't know.
Well, I can say that when we requested that the tobacco-free campus and the non-smoking ban be extended to the city sidewalks within our campus, we asked that that also be extended to the vaping. So, yes, we're not in favor of those.
Are there any further questions? All right. Thank you. We appreciate you coming and staying so late and providing so much information for us. All right, Counselor McCoy.
I have one question.
LaLani, you just, you don't have to go up there. Is your daughter the golfer?
Yes.
Wow. Her daughter's really a good golfer.
All right, we digress sometimes. All right. Was there anyone else who wished to testify this evening on this subject that did not get a chance to get your name on the list? All right. At this point, I believe we simply entertain a motion.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Dickey, do you have a motion for us?
I do. Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
So, I move that we close the public hearing on ordinance bill number 1015, but keep the written record open until June the eighth.
Seconded.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor McCoy to close the public hearing and just go, close the public testimony and keep the hearing open until?
The written record.
The written record until?
June eighth.
Until June eighth.
And just for clarity, it was Counselor Benars.
Indeed. Was it? All right.
If I can.
Is there any discussion?
Did you?
Yeah.
Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd actually like to leave the public hearing open and have the council spend some time in a work session, talking about what we've heard and where we're at, and then, and then come back and spend some time talking about it. I'm not, I'm not comfortable at all voting on this ordinance the way it's proposed now. I'm not, just not. And I haven't had the opportunity to digest this issue like the previous council has, so I'll make the motion that I have.
And this was a substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
So, if I can clarify, is the motion to just continue the hearing to June eighth?
Well, I don't know if it would be a date specific. I just, at this point, I've heard what citizens have said, and now I'd like an opportunity to discuss it, not necessarily in a deliberation, but more in a work session with the other counselors. The purpose would be to talk about the ordinance and how it might be changed. That's where I'm at.
So, if I can make a suggestion, Mayor, would your motion be to suspend the hearing and have staff schedule a work session, then?
Yes.
Okay. If that makes more sense, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
All right. The substitute motion made by Counselor Lewis and seconded by Counselor McCoy is to suspend the hearing and instead hold a work session.
Correct.
All right. Is there discussion on that question, that motion? Counselor Benars.
Clearly, after all the conversations we've had tonight, there's a lot more to this issue than just simply what we know. I don't know how many people in the council are even smokers, much less vapor people. So, there's a knowledge base here. I would just know what I've been told. So, I do kind of like the idea of a work session to get a better understanding. Clearly, it was just with all the questions we had of the people who are experts in the field and, you know, in the different directions, we don't know. We don't know the answer. I just know I don't like smoking, and I know I don't like it in the parks, but I don't know enough about everything else that's going on out there at this point.
Counselor Dickey.
Well, I won't be supporting the motion. I think we've gotten a lot of feedback. I think, you know, we've given more than ample notice to the public about this public hearing. And so, for that reason, and I'm still offering for, with my motion, for people to submit written testimony. And then, on June the eighth, we could deliberate and make the decision to go for a work session. So, for that reason, I won't be supporting the motion. However, should the motion pass, I would request, if we have a work session, that we actually bring in medical professionals to talk about electronic cigarettes. You know, I appreciate the people who came down and testified who are in the business, but I would like to hear from maybe a physician or a medical professional who doesn't have, you know, a bias about it, maybe not an interest in the business, but maybe, you know, has some other, some other knowledge of it as well, because we did hear a lot of information tonight. So, to that end, though, I still will not be supporting the motion.
Counselor McCoy.
Still a question for the city attorney. Does Counselor Dickey, did I understand correctly, Counselor Dickey's motion just basically suspends the hearing till June eighth also?
No. Counselor Dickey's motion is to close the public hearing to oral testimony and to keep the written record open until June eighth. On June eighth, you'd come back. You would conduct deliberations. You could decide to advance the ordinance. You could decide to send it back to staff. You could decide to terminate the ordinance. You could decide to schedule a work session at that point.
Okay, just gets extended to June eighth, basically.
Right.
So...
So, the substitute motion just keeps the oral record, oral hearing open, so on June eighth, you could have more public testimony.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis's substitute motion.
I thought the substitute motion was?
Oh, I'm sorry.
His was to suspend.
Right. And schedule a work session.
Counselor Anderson.
Another question for the city attorney. You didn't say question to staff, but I presume that when, if Counselor Dickey's motion passes, on June eighth, we will be able to question staff members.
At whatever point you pick this issue up again, you'll have?
Yeah, I think that's where it is right now. Okay, thank you.
Well, my comment is that I would not be supporting the substitute motion in that, given what I heard this evening and the numbers of people who did come to testify and the numbers of people who have sent letters and emails, I think we have a pretty solid body of information. And I think that it's not, it's not something that's as cut and dried maybe as let's put a road here or not put a road here. But, I do think that this council has looked at this issue now twice, clearly, previous council, this council, half of us from before. And I think that we're just kicking a can down the road. And I think that there was ample information this evening for people to make a decision. But, if you don't want to make a decision tonight, I certainly wouldn't support the substitute motion, and I'll support Counselor Dickey's motion. So, I think we, are we ready to call for the question? All right. Then, the motion on the floor is a substitute motion, which is to suspend the public hearing and instead hold a work session. Okay? All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay?
Nay.
Nay. All right. Motion fails. Thank you. And those voting no, please raise your hand for the recorder.
No.
No. Those who voted no for, no against Counselor Lewis's motion. Okay. Got that? Okay. All right. Then, the motion now on the floor is the motion that was made by Counselor Dickey. Would you please repeat your motion?
Yes, my motion is move to close the public hearing, but keep the record open, the written record open until June the eighth.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. All right. We'll now move to special orders of business, and I believe Counselor Anderson might have a motion for us on this one.
Yes, I move we adopt, I'm just, I move we adopt consent item number 3.3A. Okay, now 6.0A, sorry.
Right.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the motion as written, which is now number 6A, to approve that staff recommendation. Right?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a request for exception to the cultural and tourism funds requirement of 60, 30, 10 split funding under the city council policy C1 for major tourist attraction and cultural facilities. Is there discussion?
Yes, I have discussion.
Yes, Counselor Anderson.
And during the course of the meeting, it, I think my discussion is now moving kind of in a different way. My original reason for pulling this off the consent calendar was pretty much because there, we have a set policy, and then we're now asking to change that policy to change the percentages that are allowed to be given in the split funding under the policy C1. And my original question was, why is this happening? And so, that was more of an information thing. But, I must confess, again, having just gotten to the, back into Salem a few minutes before this meeting started, I didn't have time to review the revised agenda that was submitted by some comments today. And since that point, I've read that. And then, connecting that with what Mr. Snyder said when he spoke earlier, I didn't connect the two at the time. And now, I'm connecting them, and now I'm seeing the letter that Ross Schwarzenbruber wrote to the council and was submitted on May 26th. And now, what Mr. Snyder was saying is making a little sense to me, and it wasn't making any sense to me before. So, you know, I'm not sure what we do here, and I know Mr. Snyder is gone. Mr. Schwarzenbruber is here, and so is clearly the staff person who can probably talk about the, why we did this change, and then I can see if it relates to the Salem Creative Network situation.
Right. I think that's a good idea, because I wonder if we're mixing up the two things.
We might be.
Okay. Yes.
Good evening, Madam Peterson, counselors. My name is Christopher Neider. I'm the management analyst for the City of Salem Community Development Department and staff liaison to the Cultural Tourism Promotion Advisory Board. And the item before you is an annual request for exemption based on council policies that identifies a particular funding source as far as splitting the funding for 60, 30, 10 in the multiple, major tourist attraction and cultural facility areas. The reason why it's an annual request is because the funding is based on the number of applications received, scored, and approved and recommended by the Cultural Promotion Advisory Board, which any one year can be more or less in a dollar-wise fashion. And so, because of that, what happens is the, as you see, you can find in the, in the proposed budget for 1560 on pages 158 and 159, that the facility operators are receiving the exact same dollar amount from this current year to the budget year proposed, and that all the applications that were scored successfully were receiving full funding, and that the number of CIP projects were only applied, there was only, I believe, two that were applied for and scored successfully and received full funding. So, all that extra money rolls up for the latter to fully fund all the events and then fully fund the facility operators. And that is the reason why there's a difference between what is recommended by the Budget Committee and then what the policy C1 would stipulate as to how that bottom line, $415,000 would be divided.
Well, if every year it's different, why do we bother to have a policy if every year there's different results?
It's a guideline.
It's a guideline.
So, and if, I might add, Counselor, that if you were to look at one of the informational reports this evening that came from the Cultural Tourism Promotional Advisory Board, you'll see within their work plan, this is an issue that they're going to take up and making some recommendations. I asked the same question, why are we having an exception every year? Perhaps we can come back with some ranges, looking at past history, that we're currently expanding between 55 and 70 percent in this area, and set some sideboards up to and at least as much that will allow us to operate within those and still fund the applications as they come in and merit with their qualification and scoring. The dollars are going to the right places and not violating policy or having to come back for an exception.
Or at least change this, because to me, a policy is something different than a recommendation. And we says, here it's a policy. Now, having said that, does this particular item relate to Salem Creative Network?
No.
Okay.
They're separate issues.
And if the council were to want to address that separate issue, could that be done, or has the time for that passed? And the reason I ask this, I'm looking at these scores here, and if you take out the 1-0, that proposal gets 87, which is an extremely high number. And even with the 1-0, it's, you know, less than half a percentage point under. And the person who voted zero on the Salem Creative Network first Wednesday, which I have attended and think is a pretty good program, voted on every other one. You know, so I'm a little curious as to why they voted zero on one. And maybe that's what Mr. Snyder explained to us, but I missed it because I was in a fog from the airplane.
Mr. Neider, you?
As opposed to my usual fog.
Yes, that is correct. Mr. Snyder did.
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct. Mr. Snyder did address the scoring during his presentation tonight.
In 25 words or less?
25 words or less is that the EID funding, which would normally be given to promote the First Wednesday organization that would be supported by all the businesses downtown, the taxation on that was approximately $100, $131,000 a year that would be used for funding the First Wednesday events in addition to the general beautification and other things that took place during the, in the downtown area specifically for those businesses.
What?
And the request for this, the First Wednesday request was only $7,500, and it was felt that it would be insignificant or insufficient to put on a decent event for the downtown area.
No, I can understand that explanation, but that was not an explanation as to why somebody voted zero, but that explanation could be just what you said. Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, I understand. Okay, thank you very much. Very helpful.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Anderson. Could you please repeat your motion, and who seconded that motion? You did. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I move we adopt the staff recommendation as found in... Yeah, I move we adopt the staff recommendation as found in Agenda Item 6.8.
Okay, thank you. It was moved by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Nanki to move staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Are we going to need a motion to extend?
Can you talk quickly?
I can talk very quickly. All right. Do we have no unfinished business? You see several information reports. Were there questions or comments from councilors regarding information reports or any action you'd like taken regarding those reports? Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. And I will talk fast and I will tell you, the court reporters often tell me, slow down, Mr. Anderson, so I'll step into that mode. I had a long conversation this afternoon with Lisa Anderson Olgavy and Chris, who's Green, whose last name escaped me for a minute. And here was my concern about, this is about the Lord and Triever House. And I had a couple concerns about that and the first one was that one of the justifications used for the, and I'll know I'll never get the adaptive reuse, is that's what it is, for the adaptive reuse was that they could not rent the property for enough money to make a profit. And then on their monthly basis, here's what our mortgage is, here's what all our other expenses are, and here's what we could conceivably rent the property and there was a $700 difference. And I did not like that particular idea as a reason for granting the, the historic adaptive reuse because I could see how that could be used in other historic areas where you say somebody buys a house and then says, gee, you know, it doesn't pencil out for me to rent this house, so maybe I could do something else with this house. But what I was reassured by staff was this is, this is, we're trying to pound a square peg into a round hole here because the ordinance requires, that is one of the things we have to look at. And this is not a case where they're trying to buy the house to lease the house or buy the house to do something else with. They bought the house and they want to preserve the Lord and Triever Gardens there. So, having said that, I considered whether or not I wanted to call this thing up and I decided I didn't because I think that is established. But I will tell you that there are many concerns in the Gaye Hill neighborhood about what might happen to people coming in and buying their houses and I don't want to see this in the future used as a reason why they can use the house for something other than a residential use. That's as fast as I can go, folks.
All right, thank you. Are there any comments or questions about any of the other information reports this evening? Okay, thank you. Then we'll proceed to ordinances. For the first reading, would the recorder please introduce the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 815 relating to transient occupancy taxes amending Salem Revised Section 37.060.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we advance ordinance Bill Number 8-15 to second reading for enactment.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benards to move the ordinance Bill Number 815 to second reading. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Would the recorder please introduce ordinance Bill Number 1115?
Ordinance Bill Number 1115 relating to parking for persons with disabilities amending Salem Revised Section 102.085.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that council hold a public hearing on June 8th and proceed to second reading following the hearing if we so choose. That's always a really strange.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benards to move ordinance Bill Number 1115 to a public hearing on June 8th. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And second reading, would the recorder please take the roll call for that?
Ordinance Bill Number 715 amendments to Salem Revised Chapter 900 to allow for reconstruction of historic signs. Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoyd?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Benjamin?
Aye.
Counselor Benards?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Thank you. Passes. All right, I see, oh, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. Madam Mayor, I would move for-
Oh, I'm sorry, we have another second reading? Oh, yes, we do.
15-minute extension?
Second.
Yes. It's been moved and seconded for a 15-minute extension. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. I apologize, recorder, we do have a second reading.
May I ask for the, who moved and seconded that?
About four. Counselor Benards.
Thank you. Ordinance Bill 915 relating to parking amending Salem Revised Section 102.135. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoyd?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Benjamin?
Aye.
Counselor Benards?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Thank you. Passes. All right, public comment. We do have several people signed up. Good evening. And you have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the orange light comes on at the end of three minutes, the red light. So please introduce yourself and give your address or your ward. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Terry Wallen. I'm with American Ductile Iron Pipe Company. I'm actually based in Auburn, Washington. I could give you my address, but-
Yes, please.
5810 Olive Avenue Southeast in Auburn, 98092. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. My company manufactures ductile iron pipe. We've been making pipes since 1905, so we've been in business for 115 years. I'm a 25-year employee of American Ductile Iron Pipe. I'm a territory manager covering the Northwest, primarily Oregon, Washington, Idaho, and Alaska. And I'm here to talk to you about the ductile iron pipe procurement bid that occurred on May 20th for the City of Salem. My company sits in downtown Birmingham, Alabama, on 2,000 acres. We have about 60 acres under roof. We also have 1,800 employees. We offer good pay and good benefits. We try to do things the right way. Our distributor, our local distributor is Ferguson Enterprises. They're based here, or they have an office here in Salem. And for this particular bid, Ferguson bid American Ductile Iron Pipe on the bid. They finished second in the bidding to a company called Corex, who has branches in Roseburg, Oregon, and a new branch in Hillsboro. And Corex purchased their ductile iron pipe from a manufacturer in India. And we wanted to let you know that Ferguson actually filed a formal protest today, this afternoon, with the city manager outlining several points that we think will allow the bid to not be awarded to Corex and to roll to Ferguson. I believe it's in the city's best interest to avoid purchasing ductile iron pipe from an Indian pipe manufacturer. It's critical infrastructure. They will, they were a little bit less expensive, but there are reasons why they're less expensive compared to American. Basically, they don't have to play by the same rules to manufacture pipe. They do not follow American guidelines, EPA, clean water, clean air. They offer wages that are less than, than what American manufacturers are required. This morning, I sent each of the council members an email outlining Americans' concerns with, with the process. And I wanted to talk about the spirit of the state of Oregon and the city of Salem, their procurement rules. Subcontractors basically are required to comply with fair employment practices. They do not discriminate. They do not use child labor. They follow rules on clean air, clean water, safety. And Electrosteel does not comply with any of those particular rules. So we wanted to bring that to light. The pipe for this particular contract that would be provided by Electrosteel is 95% of the amount that was bid. Electrosteel manufactures their ductile iron pipe in India, imports it by containers. Do I need to?
Yes, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Uh huh, thank you. We appreciate your testimony. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Benjamin?
Do you know anything about this company that, from India in regard, or the, the company's LLC based in the US, but they import the goods from out of country?
Yes, sir. They, and I apologize, I was trying to get to that point, but the pipe is manufactured in India. It's imported into the United States, into Savannah, Georgia, and there is a holding company, Electrosteel USA, which is a limited liability corporation based in Savannah, Georgia. Basically rents some dock, some dock storage area and has a few employees and a few machines. So if there was a problem with the critical infrastructure that's going to be installed, the city of Salem would only have recourse with this limited liability corporation in Georgia. Whereas if they had a problem with any of the three major domestic manufacturers, American, US Pipe, and McWayne, you can pick up the phone and call each of the manufacturers or, you know, go through the legal recourse of suing our company if you didn't get satisfactory resolution. And with this company only having a few assets in Georgia, you know, I believe the city could get hung out to dry.
One more question.
All right.
What, so in regards to, I'm sorry, the, have you ever done business with the City of Salem before?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. We just recently completed a annual contract with the City of Salem that was extended for five years. So we've had the, the annual purchase contract for, for the Public Works Department to buy pipe. They bought all that pipe from Ferguson Enterprises here in Salem. We serviced the account quite nicely. We manufacture pipe in Birmingham, rail it to Portland, and we have about four acres of pipe on the ground at any one time in Portland. Ferguson also has stock at each of their branches and there are numerous branches around the state. So we are able to service in two or three days, whereas Electrosteel, I believe in their bid process, said that it would be, you know, 14 days to deliver pipe on the contract.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, mayor, councilman.
Welcome.
My name's Dan Warner. I'm the GM for Ferguson Waterworks for the state of Oregon. I live at 16520 Southwest Marceel, Veverton, Oregon, 97007. Along with American, we're here tonight to talk about the City of Salem's ductile iron contract bid that bid on May 20th. Even though there's a, there, even though an official intent or award has not been submitted as of yet, it's such an important matter, we felt that Ferguson needed to submit a formal protest today. We wanted to voice our concerns at tonight's meeting. Ferguson was the second apparent low bidder. It's our intention tonight to explain why we think we're the lowest responsible bidder. City definition of responsible bidder found in procurement rules include bidder has the appropriate material, equipment, and expertise to meet all the contractual responsibilities. The bidder has satisfactory record of performance. The bidder has supplied all the necessary information in connection with the responsibility. As of May 23rd, 2015, Corex didn't appear to have any ductile pipe at its Hillsbury property. You can see that in a picture that we presented in our proposal. We cannot find any record of expertise for Electrosteel in the US with direct municipal contracts regarding ductile iron pipe. Just because you open up a branch, have a name on it, doesn't necessarily mean you can successfully fill an annual contract the size of the City of Salem with all its provisions and delivery criteria. Oregon Law 279B110 requires that a contracting agency require that a bidder must have completed previous contracts of a similar nature with satisfactory record of performance. We don't believe that Corex submitted any satisfactory record of performance using Electrosteel with a municipality the size of Salem that could be verified and thoroughly checked. There's a difference between supplying a job versus supplying an annual contract that includes multiple purchases and service requirements. Our service terms are three to five days. Corex states 14 days and you could probably argue that they could do that. When submitting Electrosteel material, data, Corex did not disclose the pipe is made outside the US. That could be interpreted as deceptive. Finally, I know this is just public comment and the council doesn't have to act on what you heard tonight, but we're asking that you get involved in this important matter, take action with the Public Works Department, Purchasing and Engineering. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, it's me again, Catherine Morgan, 2056, a little smaller, 2056 Hollywood Drive Northeast, Salem 97305. I am quite concerned, apparently, I have a, a little half-acre ranch home in northeast Salem, which backs up to about an acre point 33 of my neighbor's yard and it's a meadow. And recently, he sold it. One of my neighbors was putting a bid on it and a developer out of Portland bought it for cash. Now, a build has gone up. It's, we're coded single-family residential and I just found out prior to the holiday weekend that it is a care facility for intensive severely mentally ill persons, young adults from age 17 to 24, which part of their conduct, they have to be nonviolent for 90 days. So they basically, the build of this house, their windows, actually look into my actively used backyard and into my living room. And even if I build a fence of ordinance six feet high, the property is such that it will still look into my property. This company, and you might know Bob Lieberman with KairosNorthwest.org, he's built several treatment facilities. He's out of Grants Pass. I was in my pajamas having coffee on my deck when he called me over to say hi and I'm like, I'm in pajamas, but I might not get another opportunity to see what's going on, what's being built over there. So I went over and started talking to him, which he relayed this information to me that it's for. And I'll read you from their website what it's for. Is a non-secure residence, residence for five young adults with serious mental and behavioral disorders. Young adults at this place receive intensive mental health services geared toward helping them develop the thinking and coping skills that will assist them in making transition to adulthood. Staff help them learn to navigate the work and/or education worlds and to develop skills that will enable them to attend schoolwork and live independently in the communicate, in the community. In addition to trauma-informed individual psychotherapy and groups, all staff share collaborative problem-solving philosophy. In other words, people do well if they can and that's how they're training them. That's their philosophy. Instead of consequences of reward or consequences, they use this other psychotherapy. So, in my backyard, picture your house. Picture a house being built right into your backyard fence, backyard, looking and seeing everything you do. My dogs, I have dogs, I train dogs for disabled people and for agility and my dogs are going ballistic with activity over there, so that's why I got inquisitive, what's going on over there. So I did talk to him about perhaps a pro- So I did talk to him about perhaps a property privacy fence, but it's going to have to go above ordinances.
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
I don't know what to do. It's, I don't know how it's coded.
All right.
How can, my thing to city council is, how can single-family residents be, have something that makes money?
Okay, thank you. Questions from counselors? I think Counselor Dickey has her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for saying and sharing this. I have a question and then a comment. So my question is, because I have some idea of the area, because I represent part of North Salem, the property that this is being built on, is it within the city limits or is it in the county? Do you know?
It's in the 4300 block of Sunny View. It has an easement coming off of, like, Sunny View.
So it could be, is that, is that city?
It is in city limits, yes.
Okay.
I think.
Just a general comment. I had one of these in my ward in a neighborhood, and it was very problematic, I can tell you. And I wish the chief was still here, because Chief Moore and I had several conversations about this, and trying to figure out how do we address these kinds of facilities in our neighborhoods? Because we don't really have a good mechanism for, you know, for dealing, we don't really have an ordinance that regulates these in a way that, that meets the purpose for the facility and also, you know, is compatible with the neighborhood that it's in. So that's not an answer, but I think the chief and I started a conversation, other council members may have had a conversation about that. Unfortunately, the one, and I believe it was the same organization that ran it, the one that was in my ward, moved out after many, many calls to the police. And I'm not suggesting this would happen in your case, but after many calls, and they said, you know, this is just not working, we're moving out. So I had several conversations with the chief about, you know, how do, how do we address this in a way that makes it work for everyone? Or, you know, do we have different zoning or something? So I just kind of want to put that out there, that that conversation has been started. And, you know, we definitely want to make sure that, you know, it works for everybody. We want people to be able to live side by side without, you know, without the issues that could possibly arise. And so, and still providing the facility for the young people that need that transitional housing as well.
Well, it'd be nice had they gone to NOLA or addressed some of the neighborhoods prior, but they kind of wanted to slip in. And then he says, oh, we're going to come to the Neighborhood Association. We're going to be knocking on your doors, inviting you to the open house. And I'm like, wait a minute, this should have happened prior, you know? So at least, you know, we could debate about it and find out about permits and whatnot. And I had been targeted just recently, the last election, by a young adult at a high school, you know, on Hollywood, Twitter threat. They threatened to burn down the house, so a young adult who's not even mentally ill had threatened to burn down our house for just posting a yes or no sign about a, you know, a voting thing, and he got 200 responses. And luckily, the police were able to, you know.
Well, I have, do you know whether the type of rehabilitation residence is licensed or managed or overseen by the county mental health department or the state?
I asked him if the, if the young adults came from mental institutions or from, and he said some.
Uh-huh.
Some do. And they have to be 90 days violent-free. So that means they've been violent in the past.
Yeah.
And, you know, so, you know, I'm a little, I'm nervous because of the threat I've gotten from a non-ill person out of, not in an institutionalized, and then these kids seeing me daily, if my, you know, dogs upset them or something, they might think something and...
Well, I don't know, actually, for what we could do to direct you, other than I would say to the Marion County or the state of Oregon that oversee the treatment programs, beyond that, I don't know. If somebody else has a suggestion.
Mayor, if I can make a suggestion?
Yes, can you make a suggestion?
Maybe if we can speak to Glenn Gross, the community development director right there, we can at least do a little research. My guess is that it's a residential home, which would not require a permit.
Five-bedroom, three-bath. So is that considered residential?
Yeah, they can do it.
So they slide under that?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're very welcome. Okay, we have one more person, Kenneth Hetzel. Hetzel is here to speak.
May I extend for five minutes?
Thank you.
Because we're going to expire in a couple seconds.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benards. Thank you. All those in favor of the five-minute extension?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay? All right, five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and counselors. My name is Kenneth Hetzel. I live at 745 Harris Street Southeast here in Salem. And I wish to address Counselor Dickey. I'll read her LinkedIn Health Educator, Marion County Health Department, February 2011 to present, four years and four months. Community tobacco prevention, including policy development, communication using a broad range of media platforms, promote tobacco cessation and related resources to public and community partners. Outreach and education for outdoor, for Oregon Indoor Clean Air Act. Provide support for Marion County community health improvement, partnership, partners, recruitment, coordinate, facilitate meetings, offer technical assistance, partners to meet project goals. I know you sponsored the tobacco bill, and I wish you would announce your employment so there would be no, no improprieties or anything of your day job. You know, it's your job to get people to quit smoking, and to vote on any bill on tobacco might be considered impropriety. Thank you.
I could address it for the council and just say, this is a legislative matter. There is no way would this be improper for her to sponsor or to vote on this bill.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we have no new business and no further business. We are adjourned.